Are we good to go? Seems like we are, alright. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Rod Dos Magboal, Mayor of Daly City. I just want to welcome everybody to our regular meeting, Monday, October 27th, 2025. Just some housekeeping rules. Public participation, there are three ways to submit public comments. Number one, submit written comments by meeting day. Number two, submit written comments during the meeting. And number three, attend the meeting in person. To submit written comments by meeting day, please email the city clerk at cityclerk@dailycity.org and include public comment in the subject line. All written comments received by 4:00 PM on a meeting day will be provided to the city council prior to the meeting. Please note, any email comments received after 4:00 PM on the meeting date are not guaranteed to be received by the city council prior to the meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. During the meeting, you may visit www.dailycity.org backslash agendas to submit comments using the public comment form to address the city council on a specific item or during the public comment period. And such comments are delivered to the city council and city staff during the meeting and may be read into the record at the time they are received. To speak at the meeting in person, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chamber and submit it to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of city clerk at 650-991-8078 as soon as possible. Okay. The city of Daly City acknowledges that we are on the ancestral lands of the Ramatush and Aloni peoples. We recognize their enduring connection to this region and honor their history, culture, and contributions. As the indigenous protectors of this land, we affirm their sovereign rights as the original inhabitants of this land and pay respect to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni people. Please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, Mr. City Clerk, if you have a roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni. Ms. Perano.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Alright, so we have a few present, or a couple, three presentations today. That's why we have a pretty big house today. And I just want to say thank you for all those that are spending the evening with us today. We could be all home watching, I don't know, the World Series or something, but this is more important. And so, the first one, proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month. And we have two. So before I present these two important people in our community, I just want to share a couple of, like, who are these people and who are, why are these people important? Okay. And so, the first one we have is Nancy Rodriguez. She is a dedicated educator at Mission High School. And I've got to know her over the years where she served, she's serving as the Arts and Culture Commission Daly City, where her and the rest of the commission, they put together an amazing, amazing Dia de los Muertos event over the weekend. Anybody who go? Okay, cool. It was beautiful. It was rooted in ritual. It was rooted in what this event, that event was about, about the ancestors, of storytelling, and about community. One thing that I've seen afar about Nancy is that, you know, she's taught so many students over the years, and she has mentored thousands, I would say, as a commissioner. And she's taken that same energy from the classroom and has applied it out in the community through the Daly City Arts and Culture Commission. The other honoree is Nuestro Estilo. And I was, I got to be, I was introduced to Nuestro Estilo through my, one of my good friends, Harvey Lazadas. And he just did like a whole, if anybody has a chance to check out his documentary, Low and Slow, please check it out. And I've been learning a lot through his work. I've been learning a lot through, I'm also a professor at Skyline College, so being familiar with the Ride Conference. And one thing that I learned was when we look at low riders, sometimes we see it through the eyes of criminality. But what this movement is about, it's about community. It's about art. It's about building community. And it's about reflecting the culture that they built here on the West Coast. And so during Latino History Month, or Hispanic History Month, it's a reminder that culture lives not only in the history books, but also through the streets, the hearts, and the moving pieces of artwork that you dedicate your heart, your passion to in your, in your vehicles to organize the community. And I think that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. And so with that, I, should I hand it off to y'all, or should I read the proclamations first? Let's do the proclamations, okay. So the, so I'll just, I'll read the proclamations and then I'll hand it over to my colleagues in the dais to see, if they want to share anything. So for Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the city of Daly City acknowledges the profound and lasting impact of the Hispanic and Latino community whose contributions have woven an enduring thread into the cultural, social, economic fabric of our nation and Daly City. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino-American community has been instrumental in shaping the history of and progress of the United States, contributing significantly across diverse fields such as education, healthcare, the arts, athletics, public service, and more. And whereas Daly City is more to an estimated 12,690 Hispanic Americans representing approximately 21.4, 45% of the city's population who enrich our community with their vibrant culture, traditions, and leadership. From the diverse culinary scene to the numerous community leaders who inspire change and foster inclusivity for all. And whereas in 1968, Congress, California Congressman George E. Brown initiated a week-long celebration observance, and two decades later, the celebration has expanded to a month by legislation sponsored by Congressman Esteban Torres and signed into law by President Ronald Reagan, stretching from September 15th to October 15th. And whereas this month is a vital observance that celebrates the rich history and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, fostering a greater understanding and appreciation of their impact in Daly City and the United States. And whereas the city of Daly City celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with its annual Pachanga Daly City, Celebranto Nuestra Cultura, on September 20th, 2025. And whereas we take this opportunity to honor the resilience, dedication, and vibrant spirit of the Hispanic and Latino Americans, recognizing their invaluable contributions to Daly City's economic growth, cultural richness, and community strength, as well as their positive impact on our nation. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magboal, mayor, and the mayors, and the members of the city council of the city of Daly City do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages all residents to celebrate and acknowledge the significant contributions of Hispanic Americans to our community. Signed and sealed by the mayor and the city council of Daly City, this 27th day of October 2025. So what we'll do is that we'll, I'll pass it to my colleagues in the dais, and then I'll have Nancy come up, say some words, we'll take a picture. And then Nuestro will come up, say some words, we'll take a picture. Sounds good? Alright. If the spirit calls on you. Alright.
Can I, I'll go ahead. My heart is full. We talk about, every time we recognize the different cultures in the city of Daly City, which are vast. My heart is happy because I feel that we're able to recognize what each culture brings to the city of Daly City and to the world. I want to just point out that these celebrations help, I believe, help the Hispanic community feel welcome. And that we recognize the beauty of the culture, and we recognize the people of our city of Daly City that represent our Hispanic community. So I just wanted to say thank you because that proclamation is beautifully written, staff, and just knowing that we're able to recognize so many wonderful people and to say thank you.
Councilwoman Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Nancy Rodriguez for bringing in our Dia de los Muertos inaugural event last year. It was her vision to bring that here to Daly City. You know, I grew up here in Daly City from Woodrow Wilson, Jefferson High School. And it's just the fabric of our community, you know? Like, having our Latino Hispanic community is just a part of Daly City. And we, we, it wouldn't be Daly City also without our beautiful Latinx Hispanic community. And so by having these celebrations, as you mentioned, Teresa, you know, it's honoring all that you have done and day in and day out, from our small businesses to all of you being educators, as well as it's just part of what Daly City is. And so we celebrate each and every one of you through our celebration with Pachanga, and also just being able to highlight, you know, leaders like Nancy and then Nuestro, you know, from when we, we talked about having the Top of the Hill Festival and highlighting the cars that are from Daly City and that are just in the neighborhood. I remember having those conversations with you all at, at Jefferson. And, you know, it's so beautiful because as mentioned by the mayor, you know, this is a part of our communities. And at one point, it was, there was a stigma that was attached to it, but, you know, that's being broken nowadays. And, and that the beauty of the low rider culture is part of Daly City. It's part of Daly City. I know that when I was growing up, and Papi Teresa as well. And so, congratulations. Thank you for all that you do for our community. It would not be Daly City without the Hispanic Latino community. I know also with my children being a part Hispanic, that, you know, he and she needs to know that part of their culture as well. And so seeing that reflection in each and every one of you, they're also able to learn that part of their culture. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those folks who know me, I always try to go back in history.
For those folks who know me, I always try to go back in history and talk about what it means to me personally. Councilmember Perronio, you said the magic words and that's what we do here in Daly City is to acknowledge and celebrate all cultures here in this city. So thank you for this proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to take you back to 1970, and this is for Nancy. There she is, take you back to 1970. I met my wife at Mission High School in the seventies. Three months ago, we celebrated our 50th anniversary. Thank you. Fast forward to 1978. And when I was working in the police department, I'm thinking about the Statue of Limitations, I can't get in trouble now. So this happened back in 1978 and I was assigned to Mission Station. And there at Mission Station, we had the low riders that would cruise down Mission Street. I think it would start at Army Street and go down to, I think 16th. And I can see, I'm going to mention you also in a moment. And it would take, it would take at least five to 10 minutes to traverse one block. And you can imagine Mission Street being packed as it was. So my partner and I, what we would do is we'd carry a boombox and we'd play our music. But we did a little bit more than that. As we're cruising with the low riders, we would turn on the outside speakers and play our music. And I mean, the feeling that you get and, you know, just being a part of the heritage really meant a lot to me. And in the Mission District, it was at 24th and was it not Shotwell, was it Shotwell or? Okay, there was a favorite spot and those who've been here long enough, they would know, they had the best paletas. Oh my goodness. And when I was walking in, somebody says, hi Sylvester, and I looked. You used to always come in our shop and get the paletas. Not because it was free, but, but it, it's just to be there and to be part of the culture. So I, I, there's a couple of things I wanted to relate and bring about to everyone. But definitely worthwhile and coming and acknowledgement. And later on in the future, as we continue in the years to come, respecting everyone is very paramount in our city. And I want to say thank you so much for the memories I will never, ever forget. Thank you, Mayor.
So now I'd like to bring down Nancy, if you want to say a few words. Yes, unless you want to come up here and take my seat.
No, can you hear me now? Okay, well, thank you, this was actually a surprise from Saturday, I was like, oh, okay. But I just want to say thank you very much, Daly City has always been very welcoming, I spent a lot of years here. And partially in like growing up or born in the Mission but came out here. But what I am going to say, we've come a long way. When I was a kid, I was really excited about one song that had two Spanish words because that was the only songs I would play. And I was like, it was called Una Paloma Blanca. And when I heard it recently, those are the only two words in Spanish. And so I was like, wow, we've come a long way. And back then, Channel 20, two hours of Spanish TV and that was it. So allowing us to do this actually feels seen, I feel our community is seen, so I appreciate that. But also, right now, in moments that are so difficult for our community, and I just have to state this, these kind of events humanize our community and humanization, saying I see you, I connect with you, is what takes us off that scale or the pyramid of hate. What it does is create love, understanding and allows us to understand that no human is illegal. And so I just have to put, put that out there because with all the rhetoric, no human could ever be illegal. And so I just want to point that out. So for me, this is a big representation of how much we've come along, but again, of humanization. So thank you very much and I appreciate this honor.
Thank you, Nancy. If I could get a representative or the whole crew of Nuestro, let's roll through.
Hello, city of Daly City, it's an honor to be here and thank you for recognizing, recognizing us as part of Latin Heritage Month. Myself and Carlos here, we are co-founders of our car club from 1994. And throughout the years, I mean, we went to high school with Jeff, that's how we met. And it's an honor to be here 2025 and still doing what we started doing in high school. And very passionate and allowing to share it with the community. And you guys seeing it and recognizing us today, that's, it's an honor. That's all I can say, thank you guys.
Yeah, pretty much what Hector was saying, we started the car club in 1994. So we've been around a long time, but one of the visions that we had was for our community that we get a lot now is we see people that we saw when they were little kids and they remember us driving through the neighborhood and they were little kids. And we, you know, always let them take pictures with us. And now we see them as adults and the same thing, we don't recognize them. But they remember the logo and they remember that we were always good to them. And as the years went on, we always get that recognition. So that was one of the visions that we had for the car club was to keep that honor and respect going on throughout the years because the car and the low riding thing is, is, is great, but the people's is one of the things that, that keeps that, keeps that bond together. And thank you guys for having us here, it's, it's an honor, growing up here in Daly City, being a part of this.
So with that, I would like, love to have, take a picture with my colleagues along with our honorees.
There we go.
Thank you for, it's like we all live here.
I know, right? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. 94, 93, 93. Thanks, I appreciate it, thank you. Appreciate it, it's an honor.
You can see there's more women.
Also, Woodrow Wilson too, Woodrow Wilson and Ben Franklin. Oh, PH and Jeff.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Okay, we're moving down to item number two, proclamation for Filipino American History Month. And we're honoring four different entities. So we're honoring, one is Seafood City, the other we're honoring is Jawal Trong Vargas. And we also are honoring Cababayan Learning Community from Skyline College and also Beat Rock Music. And before I have, or I was going to sing the proclamation, come on now. Before I say the proclamation, I just want to just share who these entities are. Because they, they are centerpieces in, in Filipino American community, Daly City, Bay Area, West Coast and throughout the diaspora. So first one I want to recognize is Seafood City. I remember, was it, were you mayor? Yeah, yeah, and we were like, we're going to bring Seafood City into Daly City, I was like, where? And then Manong Ben, he is a, no, a lot of people don't give him props. But Manong Ben has been a curator, historian in our, in our Filipino American community for many, many years. And I told him this once, I texted him, I, I, I teach Filipino American history in my, in my classes and we just finished the documentary Dollar a Day, Diamond Dance. And that was about the Manongs and the, the, my, my grandpa's generation that came here in the 1930s and how they would earn $1 a day and then they would use some of that money to pay for like dances at like big ball jazz clubs. And so Manong Ben, thank you for connecting us and it's just like coming full circle. So Seafood City, if you haven't seen this go viral, you're not on social media. Seafood City has become a vibrant centerpiece for Filipino American History Month, honoring tradition while embracing community spirit. The store aisles overflow with Filipino staples and reflect generations of culinary heritage. And its viral night parties turn St. Francis Square into a scene of joyous celebration where music, food and laughter unite families and friends around shared cultural delights. You've energized and activated the community and Seafood City doesn't just sell groceries, it provides a stage for cultural pride and storytelling. Each gathering shines a light on how Filipino Americans shape Daly City's heart. It's like bringing a Filipino family party to the outside. And that's one thing that, why I wanted to recognize Seafood City. My other proclamation is for Jawal Trong Vargas. Where's Jawal at? Jawal. And so I don't know if you see a theme here, I'm a really big into hip hop and counterculture and counter storytelling. And the first time I met Jawal, I actually saw him on stage. And he was with a bunch of my homies and I'm part of this organization called Pinoipinay Educational Partnerships. And I remember my homies were all educators, they jumped on stage, I think Valerie was there too, right? And their group was called Praxis Rocks. So shout out to all the Pep Brothers that were part of that along with Jawal. And there was a certain like vibe and a certain movement that was happening in those 2000s. And I remember moving from like SoCal to the Bay Area and I used to do a lot of spoken word, like many Filipinos during that, that era. But when I came up to the Bay Area, it was like another level. I saw Krish perform, I saw, you know, well, Rocky Rivera, and I was like, dang, fire. I saw Professor Valerie Francisco perform, I was like, dang. It's like, is it in the roots or is it in the soil? It must be both. And so when I saw Jawal, he's a charismatic Pinoipinay educator from Westmore High School, part of the Ramly, whose deep commitment to Filipino American history and ethnic studies has inspired generations of students. He's taken that same energy and vibe from, from I used to watch him during Praxis Rocks time. And he took that same energy and consciousness and transitioned, transitioned it to the classroom, where he has mentored thousands to take pride in their history, to find their voice, to lead with purpose, to organize inside and outside the classroom. His tireless dedication to education and cultural advocacy embodies his strength and resilience with the Filipino American community, making him a true honoree for Filipino American History Month. The third honoree I want to honor is, I feel like I grew up around, alongside this organization. I'm also a faculty, faculty member for the Cababayan Learning Community. I remember, so the Cababayan Learning Community, I know she wanted to be here really, really, really bad, but Dr. Liza Erpelo. I remember when I, I first graduated with my masters in Asian American Studies, I went to this conference, it was called the Filipino American Educators Conference, and I was the keynote speaker and at the end of the keynote, I was like, and I'm jobless. So if anybody wants to hire me, feel free to come up to me after my speech and let's talk. And then so I see Liza running in, he's like, I need you now. Our Filipino American, our Philippine history teacher is down, please, Rod, can you teach it? I'm like, what do I sign? You know, I felt like I was like a blind model signing a contract that didn't know anything, I was like, yes. And I, and I signed up for teaching a Philippine history class at eight in the morning before Skyline College looked like Skyline College today. And I remember parking in front of Skyline College, it looked like a straight forest. And then I didn't want to get out of the car because there was like deer. And the deer looked like me, looked at me like I entered his hood, like, what are you going to do, man? And so that, that Cababayan Learning Community has evolved. And so the Cababayan Learning Community is a Filipino American learning community, the first of its kind, where it was started at Skyline College, started by Dr. Liza Erpelo. Also Fonz president or Filipino American National Historic Society, I don't know, it was his Romeo Garcia, he just got on, he's like the, the big man on, that's overlooking Fonz. And I remember this thing that was happening at Skyline College. And through dedicated courses, courses, mentorship and cultural events, Cababayan has transformed the educational experience into a culturally relevant and responsive program. And I've had the honor to grow up alongside this organization, where we've seen decades of our students become leaders and also family to me. I get all emotional. Cababayan is more than a program, it's a movement. We've have many Fulbright scholars that we've met over the past 20 years. We have JM that is our Fulbright scholar. And, you know, just seeing this connection across the Pacific, building in our classrooms. And it's, it's a program that uplifts the entire community and creates a space for history to live, breathe and thrive. And so there's things like Philippine Culture Night, Philippine Ex Student Union and the numerous different programs of their Cababayan that has made the community college experience more than just a community college experience, but a moment in time that they can capture, that propels them to the next level of education. And then the last one I want to dedicate this to is Beat Rock Music. I'm a person that grew up in Southern California and I remember when Beat Rock Music was a clothing line. And, and from afar, I would see Bamboo, Rocky Rivera, rocking beat rock stuff. And like, I remember that store being down the street from my wife's family's house. And so every time we were down in Long Beach, we would just go around the corner, we buy up all the beat rock stuff and we'd come back up. And one thing, I don't think I ever told Bam this, but I think that like Native Guns, Beat Rock Music was my anthem to get me through my doctor program. And if anybody's ever gone through a doctor program, it's the most craziest thing to ever go through. And sometimes you need a soundtrack to get you through things. And it constantly reminded me, like, why do you do what you do? And I just wanted to honor Beat Rock for having that, that vibe, that community, that storytelling. I mentioned this to you Bam, you, you had a whole album on Filipino gangs. And a lot of times, just like we were talking about Nuestro, we sometimes demonize them and we talk about like, why are they bad? But when we start thinking about the transnational and diaspora Filipinos that had to leave the country and then they go to these cities where they're under-resourced, where they don't see people that look like them in their classrooms. They don't have content that looks, that you see in their, in their history books. Thank you. A lot of people fall into those traps and many of my family members fell into those traps. But one thing that's always there, that has been the first educators, the first ethnic studies for many people in my generation was hip hop. And I just want to say thank you to Beat Rock Music for being that voice for Filipino American history and Filipino American counter stories, because sometimes those voices never get heard. And it's through sometimes their trauma that allows us to grow and us to thrive. So with that, I just want to say thank you to all the folks that are honorees. And here's a proclamation. So Filipino American History Month, whereas the city of Daly City observes Filipino American History Month each October, dedicating the month to honoring and celebrating the rich heritage, art, history and culture of Filipino American community in Daly City and in the United States. And whereas the Filipino American community has played a significant role in shaping the social, economic and cultural fabric of the United States, particularly through leadership in the, in the labor movement, military service, healthcare, education and the arts, Filipino Americans have contributed to the growth and development of the Daly City community and to the nation. And whereas the month of October was chosen as Filipino American History Month to honor the vital role that Filipino Americans have played in US history for over centuries, beginning with the first documenting, documented landing of Filipinos beginning with the first documenting, documented landing of Filipinos on October 18th, 1587, in now, in what is now Morro Bay, California. And whereas in recognition of Philippine American History Month, the city in partnership with the Philippine Banyanian Resource Center, Center celebrated its 11th annual Casayanza Daly City Festival on October 4th, 2025. And whereas this month provides an opportunity to provide and ongoing challenges faced by the Philippine American community, including the need for greater representation, cultural preservation, and the pursuit of social justice. As we work towards a more equitable, inclusive society, and whereas the city of Daly City values and celebrates the diversity of our community and recognizes the Philippine American community and riches our city through civic engagement, entrepreneurship, cultural heritage, and leadership. And I can't go on reading this proclamation without acknowledging Tita Perla. Tita Perla, it very important. So when we talk about the Lola's and the leaders of our community, and sometimes when we look at Philippine American leadership, it's a very masculine lens. But the leaders that's, that grew the seed into the fruits it is today were Pinays. And so I want to recognize Tita Perla, Alice Bolos, Bullet X, um Tita... Oh my God, was it the one with the park?
Elinda Galion.
Elinda Galion. And so, you know, there's gonna be a Philippine American mural on the side of Seafood City that's gonna reflect that. The Lola's of Daly City that has really mothered and grew this leadership to have Filipinos on this dais, right? So, thank you. So now therefore I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magboal, Mayor, and the members of the City Council, the City Daly City, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Philippine American History Month and encourage all residents to celebrate and acknowledge the significant contributions of Philippine Americans to our community, signed and sealed by the Mayor and City Council of the City Daly City this 27th day of October. What happened? And so with that, I just have like a lineup. If you, if you want to say a few words, uh Joal, if you want to go first as our leadoff hitter. I know you taught all day and here's your, here's your classroom, man.
Mic check, one, two.
Hey, Praxis Rocks in the house.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. First and foremost, I would like to say, dear friend, brother, Kasama in the struggle, thank you so much for reaching out to me, seeing me in this light, understanding um what it took to get here. I'd like to sincerely thank you for the call and the reach out, as well as the amazing members of this city council. For many, many years of my life, I uh claimed San Francisco as my home. Uh for the first 25 years of my life, I was in San Francisco, downtown San Francisco. And then I had to make that grand shift to a new city. City called Daly City. I was in Westlake first, then Top of the Hill with my chosen fam who I lived with for many, many years. And then at the blink of an eye, I've been here for almost two decades. And I think after that phone call, it got me realizing um how much I've invested in a city like Daly City. Many of my students know me as Mr. TV, uh the rapping teacher, uh the ethnic studies educator, the person who talks about the value of stories as well as the power of stories. How we need to play our due diligence in preaching the counter narratives that are no- normally not told in our textbooks or told in general. And we have a responsibility to raise those stories. And I realize that I realize that um we've come a long way, but we still have more to go. We're in a really critical time right now where I feel that we have an opportune moment to really live by um the principles of humanization. I'd be lying if you, if I didn't say that it wasn't super hard to be a teacher right now. Modeling and demonstrating humanity while observing on the outside a destruction of it. So we have a part to play right now, right? In understanding and acknowledging the people who've paved the way before us, um but also knowing that we have a part to play in um progressing that history forward, hoping that this history can be tilted to the right side of history. And um I just think we just have a moment here to, to, to really uh come together and to show up for one another in ways that maybe we haven't envisioned in the past. And so, yeah, definitely taking this moment and any moment you have on a platform to use it, right? Because those moments don't always come. And um at any moment in time, find ways to uplift others. In the spirit of um the great Ubuntu phrase, right? I am because we are. So thank you very much once again, Daly City, for the acknowledgement. And thank you for everyone uh that has played a role in my development. And knowing that teaching is um, it's never about the income, y'all. It's about the outcome, always. And um thank you for the folks um who acknowledged me in that light. So thank you.
Next we have a Cababayan Learning Community, Skyline College. Dr. JM. I know you don't like be her, but you gotta, you gotta own it. And Jenna.
Hello. We're actually super nervous. This is our first time at a, a city hall. But um thank you for having us and thank you for this, you know, moment of honoring all these communities and especially at a time like this where they just want to erase us, you know? And it's just, it makes me, it makes me feel powerful as a student of Skyline and as a student, as a Filipino-American student to even be up here and represent our community and show and remind people how important it is to have a place for us, an environment where we all feel welcome. And we, we thank you for that, so.
Yeah. In behalf of this Cababayan Learning Community of the Skyline College, um we really thank you for this commendation. With a personal note, it's my third month here in the United States. And uh I really uh, I'm really grateful for commending and honoring Skyline College Cababayan Learning Community because in my third, in my three-month stay here in the United States, that community became my home. So thank you very much.
And I'll see you in class tomorrow, JM. Next we have uh Seafood City. So if anybody represented from Seafood City.
Thank you, Mayor Rod, and members of the city council. You've already introduced me, but for those who forgot already like me, I'm Ben Menor. I have my two associates here. We have Christine Delacruz, our s- s- store manager. And you may not get to see her much because she's running around making sure that you get fed well. And this is Al Cordova, our area manager. Let me just say a few things. Uh you broke my heart, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because you remind me of my father. When he was telling me what your father was telling you. And at the time when I came to the United States in 1955, we were invisible, invisible. And I thank you very much for honoring our Latino community. I worked with Roberto Hernandez. He has the longest um low riding that you can imagine up and down Mission Street. And, and so, America has come alive since 1965 after the Immigration and Nationality Act that was helped by African-American civil rights leaders like Dr. Martin Luther King. And only in America can you have a seafood city come out of nowhere. Come out of nowhere. This is an American-made business, not from the Philippines. The Go family were here. And one of them says, you know, I'd like to start a little store, a Sari Sari store. And, and so we thank you for that. We thank you for the support. Christine and Al wants to thank in behalf of all of Seafood City and the 38 stores throughout the United States and Canada. We can't thank you enough. And especially at this time when we're celebrating Philippine American History Month. I'm part of the founding of the Philippine American National Historical Society and founded also the Santa Clara. And hopefully, I'm gonna have Madame Manalo, as well as Officer Glenn and Professor Rod to help me, because only, the only chapter that's not in the Bay Area is San Mateo County. So I would like to welcome you to join me in establishing a Fonz chapter in San Mateo County, based in Daly City, the Manila town of the United States, okay? Last but not least, in the Filipino-American history um experience, I would be wearing my baron tagalog. I bought, I, I bought 10 a while ago. I never knew that the Filipino-American History Month would be 30 days every day. And I want to tell you, the only person that has beat me to more events, only because they know that I, I came out of Fonz, is Madame Jesslyn Manala. I have seen him, I have seen you everywhere. Last Saturday, when we celebrated Mano Larry Itlion's birthday, that's our hero in the farm workers movement, she was there in San Jose. I said, wow, this is what a true leader is about when you're there. And, and all the younger folks appreciate it, especially the women. And so at Seafood City, as we celebrate these late night madness, and it's truly a madness because you know why? Your mayor was there the other uh Friday. And, and I gave him the mic and he thought he was MC Hammer, you know? And I, he, he's got some moves. But I, I just want to say this. You mentioned one thing, which was the preservation of our culture. And, and when I started and founded the PCN movement, uh I didn't know it would be a movement. But 50 years now, our young people, even if they don't have ethnic studies, they have PCN. And that's what gives them the, the historical, the cultural of their, who they are. And so Seafood City, last but not least, is one that brings capua to Daly City. But I want to tell you this, Daly City, you're getting everybody else in the whole Bay Area coming to Daly City, you know? And we used to say, I don't want to go to Daly City. It's too much fog. But now they can come to Daly City because there's more lumpia than you can ever eat, okay? So with that, I'd like to have maybe Christine or Al say a few words uh also on behalf of Seafood City.
Thanks, Manong Ben.
Uh in behalf of Seafood City, tapa diyan ang honors. Uh thank you very much for honoring Seafood City.
We are happy to serve the community of Daly City. And please visit the Late Madesail on this coming October 31 and November 1. Thank you so much.
And last but not least, when we had the grand opening, I want to thank council member Jesslyn, Vice Mayor Glenn, and council member Pam. Unfortunately, uh I think Teresa was in Manila, so we'll give her and, and of course, uh Dr. Rod was, uh didn't notice. We only made this uh announcement only two weeks before the grand opening. So we want to thank you for being so receptive. And uh again, to Vice Mayor Glenn, oh, he took our, he took that mic and just knew how to become Al Green, you know? So with that said, thank you again. We appreciate all that you've done. Thank you, Daly City. You have been a great partner. We can't thank all of you enough. Tita Perla, you're, you're one of our heroes. And to all the honorees, being that I'm one of the oldest organizers and activists in the Bay Area, congratulations, you deserve it. And to my Latino, Latina friends, uh you know what? I'm gonna find me a low rider. It may be a little BW, but uh we'll go out there and I'll have it bounce. Okay?
Thank you, Manong Ben.
Thank you.
And our last speaker, uh Beat Rock Music. So Beat Rock Family, if y'all want to come through, feel free to come through to the mic.
Not Guilty? No, sorry. Uh hey, thank you very much. On behalf, I am Bamboo. I'm the chairman of Beat Rock Music. Um this is Rocky Rivera, the first lady of Beat Rock Music? No, another artist on the label. But on behalf of the leadership of Beat Rock, Fat Gums, Cat Corito, uh Bo Ryan, Fernandez back there, Sheppy, uh Isil, and Traktivist, um as well as all the artists on the label, that's Classy, Ruby Abara, Rocky Rivera, and DJ Rosa, Oteyo Dub, Marco Kane, Golden Age Society, Ruby Abara, and Power Struggle, and Prometheus Brown. We want to say thank you as um a sanctuary city, uh as a city that was one of the first to pass a ceasefire resolution back in June of 2024. Uh we're honored to be recognized. We also encourage this progressive work that y'all are doing to continue it. And Beat Rock Music will help to provide the soundtrack for that. So thank you very much for honoring us. We appreciate it.
I'm gonna have y'all talk. So um I had this all backwards. I was supposed to have my colleagues talk first. So I, I just want to open up to my colleagues on the dais to share some comments if they would like to, who wants to lead us off? Councilmember Peranya.
What an evening, right? I, I said this to the mayor, um and I mean it. I, I know I can tell. Our hearts are full. Our hearts are full because it, you can feel the love here in this room. You can feel, you can see what one person can do to make it a better place. Be it a teacher, be it music, be it vehicles, be it food. Isn't that great? I mean, you know, more cities should be as lucky as we are, you know? And I think we have the recipe for success is because we are a city of immigrants. We are a city, yes, we are a city. You know, they started with the Italians and the Irish and all the rest of us came along. And what a beautiful city we have. And I'm very proud of all of you and proud to be, to say, I am from Daly City. So thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peranya. Count, count, whoever wants to go first.
Thanks, Mayor.
He's still taking notes. Okay. First and foremost, I, I want to acknowledge you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the amazing honorees that you chose this evening to accept the Filipino-American History Month proclamation. Each and every honoree here um really brings in something unique and special from as mentioned, Joel as a teacher. I, I've seen your students and how receptive they are to you and how inspired they are from you. from you. And it's not only just one classroom, it's like year after year after year. And so, huge congratulations on this honor and thank you for educating our next generation to have critical thinking skills, to be able to take pride in who they are, and really move it into action. So thank you for that. For Kaba Bayan Learning Center, with one of the founders, Dr. Liza Arpelo, we have, we have a bond. Dr. Liza Arpelo actually was one of my teachers doing Educational Opportunity Program at San Francisco State University, EOP. And she also was a type of teacher where I remember not having a printer at home, and she said, come on over to my house. I brought my, at that point, my younger sister in high school, I'm like, we're going to go over to my professor's teacher because I have to print something. And she said, come over. And so, you know, she was always amazing and willing to support. And no doubt about it that she was going to create something like Kaba Bayan Learning Center at Skyline. So huge congratulations to the whole organization who continues to have such a central place at Skyline continuously. To Seafood City, it, it, we've started some, you have all started, or Daly City has started something that has gone viral. If you haven't seen, I was talking to Mayor, Las Vegas was like, I think we got, we're even bigger than Daly City. It was so funny to hear that because I was like, why are they, why are they saying we're even bigger than Daly City? Isn't that ironic, Las Vegas saying that? I mean, look at the irony of that, right? And so, it's really because of the people, the workers, the local DJs in our community. And just, and this is correlating to a time where many of our community members may be fearful with what's happening around. But when you come into a place filled with joy, when you're surrounded by community, even for those moments, you're able to feel safe to be who you are and to not worry, you know? It's just, it's just, it was, it's like an intergenerational party, like the mayor said, where it's like a, it's like a party where everyone is welcome and everyone feels safe to dance. One of my, maybe she's in her mid twenties, she's like, I don't know why they have the lights on. It'd be easier if the lights were dim, right? But I'm like, actually, the beauty of it is everyone feels safe to be who they are dancing with the lights on. It's pretty amazing. And so, I think one piece of Seafood City, which is something really beautiful for the Filipino American community and the Daly City community as, as a whole, is to see the upcoming mural that will be, as Mayor mentioned, to highlight the history of Filipino Americans in the United States, specifically as well as in Daly City. I don't think there is anything like that, where it's visualized, where we're able to celebrate, where it's also a moment of teaching others around the history, the rich history of Filipino Americans that have been here since 1587. And so, I look forward to seeing that come to fruition and celebrate so many elements of that for the community and with the community. Last but not least, I grew up with Beat Rock, you all. Thank you so much. I think that, you know, now when we look back on how many years, it's the continuation of ensuring that our voices are in that, in the music. And it's, it's continuing the legacy that you all have brought together. You know, Rocky Rivera, Krish, you know, thank you so much. I loved it when you're up here, you're like, no, you know what? You're like, not the first lady. And I love that women empowerment, you're like, no, I am. That, that Penai empowerment, I, I heard that. And I just want to say thank you because I think over the course of, I don't know, we were in our twenties that time here, as you mentioned, that music is so profound. And that when you are aligned with the music and the music aligns with you, it's like an anthem that you take with you. And you may have it on repeat over and over again because you resonate and you're heard and your voice is there. So congratulations to all, all of the honorees today. And like what Mayor has mentioned, without the foundation of Tita Perla Arbey and those who's here who's 90 years old. Ninety, she's, and, and we're talking about Filipino American History Month, so I will say, you know, she helped found the Filipino Bayan Han Resource Center. She helped found the Filipino American Democratic Club of San Mateo County. She also was there around the time when the Filipino Caucus was happening. She shares with me, you know, she actually was probably the first Filipina that represented the 19th Assembly District with the California Democratic Party. And so, you know, thank you, Tita Perla, you are amazing, 90 years strong. And so, madaming salamat po. I know that you are, we've said it over and over again, you're the energizer bunny that keeps on going. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben, 1955, how old were you when you came?
Five.
Five? Okay, I'm just trying to get a gauge because when, when you came, I was one. And I know how old I am. So thank you for that quick history lesson. I want to congratulate all the honorees. It's definitely been an enlightening experience for me and learning, not only of the different cultures, but of the different ages. Okay? Councilmember Manalo made mention about the lights and if you ever go to Seafood City and when they have Midnight Madness and, you know, all the lights are on. But I'm sorry to say, I come from a long time ago, when I was 20, we turned the lights down. And I was all about slow music. And when the lights turn a different color, like red or green, you know what to do. I bet, I think the only fastest song I used to dance to when I was 20 is the Carlos Santana in Suavecito, which is still good today. But just the same, thank you for that information on Beat Rock because I'm going to look that up and see if I can get in the groove at my age. So, but again, Seafood City, how long has Seafood City been open? Couple of months?
Like a quarter?
Two months? Okay, I can't use that excuse because prior to Seafood City opening, this suit used to fit me and now I can't close it. I go to Seafood City at least three times a week. And if you want to come to Midnight Madness, which starts at 8:00 PM at night and goes on to midnight, I'll teach you a little secret. Show up an hour early so you can sit down and me, I sit down and just eat. Oh, and then you watch all, all the kids, oh my goodness. I mean, by the time I leave, I may stay for about an hour, hour and a half, and they're just getting started. By the time I'm leaving, I can't even get out of the door because they line up all the way up the block. And, but if you haven't been there, you must try it. And the upcoming event is called Hollow Halloween. And the reason, and I'm thinking it's hollow, there's a Filipino delicacy or drink called Hollow Hollow, which is shaved ice and different kinds of fruit, jackfruit, condensed milk, either uva ice cream, but you see, I know. But anyway, be sure to check that out. And with the manager from Seafood City, yeah, you're right, she's busy. I mean, I've seen you, but she's too busy to talk, she's running. She is running, she takes care of everything. So Seafood City is the place to go. Again, and I'll end with this, again, thank you to all the honorees. And you definitely opened up my perspective and gave me something to think about. Don't forget, we're here as well. So congratulations to all. Thank you so much.
And with that, if I could get the honorees to come down and accept your proclamation.
Who? All of us?
How do I get all of us?
Can you see?
Yeah.
Oh.
All right. Guess what's that, condensed?
Okay.
We also put condensed milk in the coffee. And to all our Filipinos, mabuhay!
Mabuhay!
All right, thank you for all those that have came out. We're going to proceed to item number three, another proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We don't have anybody accepting, but I just want to read the proclamation. So proclamation, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas October is recognized nationwide as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to increase public understanding of breast cancer that impacts women, men, families, and communities. And whereas breast cancer affects a significant portion of the population, with nearly 1 in 8 women and 1 in 726 men expected to face a diagnosis in their future. As of October 2025, invasive breast cancer has been diagnosed in approximately 316,950 women and 2,800 men nationwide. And whereas timely detection remains a vital approach in effectively treating breast cancer, with routine screening serving as the most dependable method to identify the disease early before it advances and becomes more difficult to treat. And whereas we honor and celebrate the strength and resilience of breast cancer survivors and their families, whose unwavering spirit and determination inspires hope in all of us. And whereas the pink ribbon has come to represent a universal symbol of breast cancer awareness shining a light on the cause, inspiring education and uniting individuals in a shared spirit of solidarity, wearing this symbol, ribbon serves as a powerful gesture of support for those effective and affected and a visible commitment to raising awareness. And whereas the city of Daly City recognizes the commitment of healthcare workers, researchers, advocates, and caregivers who tirelessly work to improve care, support patients, and advance towards a cure. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magboal, Mayor, and the members of the City Council of City Daly City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Daly City and urge all citizens to engage in this important observance by increasing their awareness of the warning signs of breast cancer and by taking proactive steps to support early detection, education, and prevention efforts aimed at reducing breast cancer related fatalities. Signed and sealed by the Mayor of City Daly City on this day, 27th day of October 2025. So with that, I'll just have it open to my, my colleagues on the dais, if you have anything you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for this proclamation. I think it's so important. I know now that technology has advanced with breast cancer, but it's still so important to not miss your appointments and take your annual exams very seriously and as well as, I know recently they've mentioned to actually take an extra test further if you have, if there's like, you know, you have dents, right? And so, it's like, these steps are not told to us or are not educated. And that I know sometimes, and a lot of women are like, we're too busy, we're juggling our kids, we have our careers, but our health is so important. So please make sure you get your annual exam. Thank you. You know, my, my mother did, is a breast cancer survivor, you know, because, you know, even in her elder age, she was getting her annual checkups. Thankfully, it was fully removed. But that is also just a reminder that whether you're younger or older, it's so important to get checked on an annual basis. Thank you.
Councilmember Perania.
I'll make it quick. I reiterate, I want to reiterate what Councilmember Manalo said, and that is, many women, we feel we're too busy and we put ourselves last. So I would just say, just, you know, put yourself first because just like when you're on the airplane, they say if you have children, you need to put the mask on yourself first and then put the mask on the children. Because families, they need moms and they need grandmas and aunties. And so, put yourself first, get your exams, so you're there for everybody. And I'm listening to, we all need to do it. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this kind of short. Councilmember Perania, thank you so much. You said something that I didn't really think about, and that's the nurturing aspect of women. And to put yourself first, because I think that's very, very important. If you folks did not notice, our police officers, our chief, they bear the pink patch all for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Those patches are available at the police department. And any funds will be donated to the Coleman, Coleman Susan, Coleman Foundation for breast cancer. So there's a sample of the patch, ladies and gentlemen, and, oh, even has some available. All right. So thank you so much and thank you for the continued awareness. It is very, very important. Thank you.
Breast cancer has affected a lot of people in my family and it's, it's a heavy subject when it comes to many, many families. And I remember growing up, I had, I felt like growing up in a Filipino immigrant family, like you, you feel like you had more than one mom. And I remember when I was growing up, my, my auntie Adora, Adoration Magboal, was like my second mom. And she was the first person that I ever knew that had breast cancer. And she passed away at a very young age and wasn't able to see my nieces or her grandkids grow up. And I think that was a wake-up call for a lot of our families, is to, to get tested. And also the preventative measures as well, you know? Because there's a lot of prevention that can happen, to eat right, or even trying to have a little bit more movement, or there's a lot of things that I feel like that can...
That, that, that.
Yes. We have a DJ in here. That we have people that can do the health, healthy things to be preventative. And that, it's easier said than done, but I think it's a critical issue in our community. Okay, moving on. All right, so to item number four, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve regular minutes of October 13, 2025. I just would like something corrected, if you don't mind. During the minutes, or during the meeting, under the council reports, I just wanted to clarify, I know the minutes that I read are not all of it, but I just want to make sure this is important. If you could make sure, to clarify, I did not ask Councilmember Di Giovanni to speak. I did not ask Councilmember Di Giovanni to speak on my behalf, you know. And so I wanted that to be retracted, if you don't mind. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
With requested edits by Councilmember Pranay, I move to approve the minutes of October 13, 2025.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number five, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting for October 27, 2025?
Motion to approve a regular meeting agenda of October 27.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. It's okay.
Second.
Can we go first and the second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Do we have any other public comment? I believe all the comments that I see here are related to item number 18. So if you sign up for item number 18, you'll be talking when that item is discussed.
We have one comment, Mayor.
Oh, one? Okay. Not really.
Oh, she says you have one not related to 18?
I think it, it's 18, 18. Is it this one?
I showed three cards.
They all state 18. Madam City Clerk, they all state 18.
Yeah? Okay. Thank you, City Clerk.
Oh, there is one.
Oh, there is one? Oh, okay. All right. I think this might be it.
My name is Jim Wagstaff.
There we go.
And I am a lawyer. I practice constitutional law. And I teach First Amendment and constitutional law at San Francisco State University, as well as at Stanford and as well at Hastings Cause of Law, where I have a class tomorrow morning. I'm here today on behalf of Tom Piccolati and his staff. And I'll be very brief. Because I've learned something tonight that I love to be in these great settings, that free speech is a very important right. We've seen it exercised brilliantly in this room. But a good name and reputation is precious as well. And Mr. Piccolati and his staff have been the victims of attacks on their good name. And you spend a lifetime to build a reputation. And you can lose it when people say things about them that are inaccurate. I teach that a calculated falsehood has no place in our society. Let me be blunt. The First Amendment is not a hunting license. The First Amendment is a protection. It protects our deep-seated freedoms. And may I say, I'm here tonight, I'm having Mr. Piccolati and his staff to say that those freedoms should not be defiled by false statements. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Wagstaff, for your words. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. We're headed to the consent agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
With the exception of item number 16, I'd like to approve the consent agenda.
Are there any other items that want to be pulled? Seeing none.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great. So off to item number 16. Approve employment agreement with Cameron Christensen as Chief of Police.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This item is recommended, improvement of an employment agreement. It's simply put for a period of five years so that the police chief will not be terminated without cause. That's the simple explanation of it. So a fixed five-year term, terminated without cause. The chief is entitled to severance equal to 12 months. And this is a protection built in because it is a very risky position. And I believe this is appropriate. And I'd, you know, like to hear the council's comments on it.
Thank you, City Manager Tom Piccolati, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
I pulled this item not because of the question of the contract. I pulled this item because I, I think it's extremely exciting to see that we will now formally be able to have, you know, Acting Chief Christensen as chief for the City of Daly City.
And to follow up on that, Councilmember, it's an honor to be here to do this, to be before you, to announce the Chief of Police. And I'll just, a little bit of background. This individual has began as a police officer in 2004. As a sergeant promoted in September of 2007. In September of 13, became a police lieutenant. Police captain in June of 2018. And in 2023, became deputy police chief. And there are so many things that I could go on and talk to council and rave about this individual's performance over my tenure here and before that. But what I'd like to do, so we can hear from him really quickly here, is I'd like to proudly introduce to you Daly City's 15th Chief of Police in our history. And that would be Police Chief Cameron Christensen. I gotta put the badge on first. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Manalo, Councilmember Pranay. I have many people to thank. Many influential leaders, supervisors, peers, friends, and many community partners and members have helped me chart my career course. Out of respect for one's time, I'll be brief. You all know my family and you know they're my world. They have weathered all my career has had to offer and they drive me to be my best and constantly strive for more. I wouldn't be here without the unwavering support and love from them and my family, my parents. Those I have served with are an extension of my family. Long shifts, weekends, holidays, and special events, working alongside those who you entrust your life to and share a similar mission of service to the community. It's not only those in uniform. My support staff, executive team peers, and those from other city departments who work just as hard to ensure we have the resources and the tools, as well as the opportunities to connect with our community, deserve the same recognition. Our success is a culmination of the collective experience, perspectives, unique strengths, and personalities of all of our city departments. Councilmember Manalo, as you often say, teamwork makes the dream work. A quarter century into my career, 21 years serving with the City of Daly City have provided me with immense opportunities. As Vice Mayor Sylvester can attest to, this is a challenging and complex profession. We're expected to carry out our jobs with perfection, often under the most stressful of environments with an expectation that is constantly evolving. Our customers are the community. And our number one priority is protecting them and enhancing their quality of life. We prioritize empathy and a desire to serve our community through compassion and collaboration. In my current role, I have had to seek guidance and direction from others. You, the council, and our amazing city manager, Thomas Piccolati, have been pivotal in my journey these last few years. You have supported me and your police department. I've learned many lessons along the way with likely more to come. But ultimately, I am more optimistic now than ever. And that can be attributed much to you. Solicitude, stewardship, and service. Mayor, those three principles may sound familiar as you spoke to those principles when you took your seat a year ago. Those same principles will guide me as I prioritize our community, lead my staff with the highest of standards, and strive for excellence in the service we provide. Our service exists because of the community. We rely on trust, support, and partnerships to be successful. I've invited two of the most influential community members I've had the privilege of working with over the years, individuals who have made significant impact on me and our organization. Marie Villarosa has been a trusted leader and partner, strengthening our connection with the community and supporting my growth in this role. Her dedication to giving back has aligned our efforts time and again. She embodies what a true community partnership means to me. Her presence here this evening is a sign of commitment to ensuring our continued growth. I'd like to provide you with some flowers. I've been grateful to have my wife pin my badges for all my promotions throughout my career. Officer, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, and Deputy Chief. Each of those badges represented a distinct role and responsibility within the department and each marked a milestone in my journey of service. The chief's badge, however, carries a deeper meaning. It represents not only my leadership with the organization, but also the trust, partnership, and responsibility we hold with our community. For that reason, I have chosen someone very special from our community to pin this badge. Someone who has had a profound impact on me personally and an equally meaningful influence on the community we serve. When she smiles, you smile. When she laughs, you laugh. When she speaks, people listen. She embodies compassion, integrity, and fairness. Her heart is generous, her spirit unwavering, and she is the quintessential example of what I strive to be each day. And at this time, I'd like to invite my family to stand by my side. And I'd like to ask for Tita Perla to come pin my badge, please.
See, I, if I pin you.
It's okay. I said my wife's done this many a times. Every time she's pinned me.
Ouch.
Ouch!
There you go. It was. Yeah, there you, there you go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm glad the day has come. Thank you. I know that. One thing that I'm glad that, you know, people police now is into community. Like long, long time ago, people are scared of the police. But this time, our police department, I'm so proud of you. And I still live in Daly City as long as I'm here. Thank you, thank you so much.
So I look forward for the next many years. A lot of great things in the pipeline and I'm excited. So thank you very much, Council.
Don't move.
I'm not moving.
Stay right there.
I'm going anywhere.
Stay right there, Chief. We have some words.
Yeah.
And we have our leadoff hitter, Councilwoman Trisha Pranay.
I'm sorry, got teary-eyed, I'm sorry. But when yours, the officers lined up and they have your back. We have such, I'm sorry, I, I'm still getting over this. And if I get emotional, I lose my voice. I think I've told you this before. You know, we're so lucky in this city to have you, to have your officers and your staff. We're very spoiled. And as we, as you do more and more community outreach and as you do more and more coffee with a cop, it's nice, it's again, something that I said earlier. And it pertains to you and your group as well and your team, is that the more we welcome people and the more you, we open the door and we let people know, we let the residents know, you know? Daly City is a great place. We have amazing officers, amazing staff. And it's your leadership. It's your leadership, right? And then you, when you got, just right now, when you were talking about Tita Perla, I said, oh, great. Now I'm really gonna cry and I'm not gonna have a voice. But I just want to thank you. You know how I feel already. But we do that. But thank you. Thank you for, you know, creating this environment, for giving us these officers, for giving you your leadership. And thank you, City Manager Tom Piccolati. I'd like to thank you as well. Because I know he has a lot to do with it. So thank you. Congratulations to your family. Your girls are getting so big, or tall, I should say, right? It's good to see you guys again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a really pivotal time for the City of Daly City. And I want to say thank you, City Manager Tom Piccolati, for an excellent choice. You have definitely, as Acting Chief, I've seen the tremendous work you've put in, the heart that you've given to the community. And with all of the officers that are right behind you, with your executive staff, how much respect you have and how much each and every one of them understand how, what it is about serving our community and keeping our community safe. I do want to read something, if I may. And I want to say my apologies to you, City Manager. I didn't see the special order there. I jumped ahead of the gun. I'm like, oh, this is, this is the item right here. I see your name. And so I just wanted to say, I didn't want to jump ahead of that. But I saw the item on consent. And so
It's fine. It's very appropriate.
So I just wanted to share with the community also why I sent in a letter of recommendation for you becoming officially a chief. So on October 10th, I said to City Manager Tom Piccolati, "I'm writing to express my full support for Acting Chief Cameron Christensen for the permanent position of Chief of Daly City Police Department. Since stepping into the role of Acting Chief, over the course of years, Chief Christensen has demonstrated exceptional leadership, professionalism, and a deep commitment to both the department and the Daly City community. His ability to build strong rapport with his staff has fostered a culture of trust, collaboration, and mutual respect, resulting in improved morale and a more unified team. Chief Christensen has also made significant strides in increasing staffing levels with a strategic focus on recruiting talent from our community. This initiative has strengthened the department's connection to Daly City residents and ensured that our officers reflect the values and the diversity of the community they serve. Also, by introducing technology and the vision for a command center with data analytics, drone capacity, and capabilities. Chief Christensen has shown his commitment to finding long-term solutions and tools to help his officers, to help residents and those who visit safe from harm. Under his leadership, the department has seen measurable improvements in operational efficiency, community engagement, and internal cohesion. His vision, integrity, and dedication make him the ideal candidate to continue leading the Daly City Police Department into the future. I wholeheartedly endorse Acting Chief Cameron to the position of chief and urge you to consider this letter as a strong testament to his qualifications and impact. Thank you so much for what you've done. And the future is bright at Daly City Police Department. And we've seen it over the course of two years, just you as Acting Chief. This is well, well-deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manalo. Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, and to all your staff who was standing in the back, having been there and done that, but not as chief though. But being a police officer is an honorable and noble profession. And as I think back, I didn't move to Daly City until 1988. But I became a police officer in 1978. And it's a funny thing, in San Francisco, every police officer knew, when you cross the line in Daly City, you don't fool around. You definitely don't fool around. And I didn't fool around. Because that was the job of Daly City police officers and the work that they do to ensure everyone's public safety. But not everybody understands that. When I came onto City Council in 2016, I think it was in 2020, I was driving down the street and I was stopped by a Daly City police officer. And I'm saying to myself, well, what did I do? And they didn't stop me just to say hi. So they came up to the car and they says, "Hello, sir, can I see your driver's license and registration, please?" Very professional. I forgot the officer's name, but that didn't matter, and I'm just wondering. And I didn't want to let them know I was on City Council. I just want to be treated just like everybody else. And the officer says, "Hello, sir." You know, the reason why I'm stopping you, they, they have to tell you the reason why they're stopping you. And even to this, to this very day, I still violate the law. And what is that, folks? Yes. I don't know, being a police officer, when you respond to a call, you gotta get out quick. I use that as an excuse. But anyway, the officer admonished me and, you know, it was a good feeling. And, you know, being a police officer myself, I learned the difference. You get a lot more with sugar than you do with lemons. And, you know, and folks need that. And a lot of the folks don't know, but violations and being stopped by a police officer is discretionary. There is no quota. It's discretionary. But can you imagine how people felt on their way to work? And they get to work and they tell their colleagues, "Oh, I got stopped by a police officer. What happened? He, he or she let me go." Do you know the feeling you get? And that's what I used to always think about. Ninety-eight percent of people who I stopped, I always let them go. Because it, it, you know, that interaction, police officers are human too. They have to put on their uniform one leg at a time, just like we do. But they, they are subject to feelings. And their feelings, you know, I, I can go, continue on. But I'm going to say, I want to thank your family, Chief, your wife, and your young ladies who are growing up. I tried to put my position in the sense of my wife over 34 years and what they had to go through. And I know for all the police officers, when you're called, you go. You miss Christmas, you miss Thanksgiving. San Francisco, you never had off on Halloween. And that's coming up. So I want to say thank you so much. It is indeed a calling. Thank you for your service. That uniform called out to you. And that's why you police officers and the firefighters wear the uniform that you wear. Be proud of it. On the funny side, I noticed, Chief, your shirt had three bars on it. Did you folks notice that? No, Theresa, you're saying yes.
I did, because you pointed it out.
No, I already, I already told you about the stars. But if you, you saw his shirt, he had three bars on there. You know, each bar signifies?
Five years.
Five years. But his jacket has four. And he's, he's been in 21 years. So you need to add another bar on your shirt, Chief, if you're gonna be.
Twenty-five's next year. Twenty-five's next year. It's coming.
See, I, I get critical thinking. But he does have the correct number, you know, on there. So congratulations. I, I'm just having fun up here. It's good. It's very, very good. And thank you. Thank you, all the police officers and all our public safety folks who take care of our city. We're looking forward to it. And I don't know, I, I just can't say thank you enough. Thank you.
I just want to be honest with everyone. Before I got onto council, I never had like the best relationships with cops. Every time I saw a cop behind me, I would get mad nervous. And maybe it's because I used to have like an import car and I would get pulled over and they would ask me what gang you from or what set you were from. And so when I got onto City Council, I still had that little like shakiness to me just because of I had these bad experiences when I was younger. And over the years that I've been on council, and I think Cameron, you, you allowed me to see the human beyond the badge. And we've, I would say we've grown together. You know, whoever had to serve through COVID and to come back and to go, and to like hear the stories and what our law enforcement has to go through, it definitely changed, shifted my, my, my framework, my understanding, my connection to public safety and and law enforcement. And, and so when I see, when I'm outside my community, I get that nervousness. But when I'm here, I think you're a constant reminder of like, this what public safety should look like. Humble humility. This idea of like service, community, building relationships, humanization. And that's, those are things that I've slowly evolved and understood, this relationship, and it's, it's through your leadership and seeing you every day and talking to you on these different council meetings, these countless coun, council meetings. And I also want to thank our City Manager for elevating you to being chief. Because this is what it's supposed to be. We're supposed to grow our own hope. We're supposed to grow our own, keep them here. Because the more connections that we have with our communities, the more trust we could have with our communities. And the better our community can become. So congratulations and
Thank you.
thank you for serving our community. And congratulations to you and your family. And I'm just glad to be there, right beside you through this journey. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I enjoy the ride.
Hey, Chief, I just wanted to say, what, what the mayor just said, it is true. And it took some time coming, but he's starting to see the light. But thank you for sharing that, Mayor. I, I bet that must mean a lot to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
I just found a really quick email so fast. It's from former Councilmember Ray Benaventura. He says, "Congratulations, Chief, well deserved. And having Tita Perla pin your badge was awesome. You're an honorable man with a lot of class for doing that. Thank you."
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
What's that? Oh, we know.
We'd like to break for cake.
Yes, of course.
No donuts?
And so with that, let's recess for some cake and we'll come back and we'll.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Can we vote on the item?
Oh, yeah.
I happily move the item, Mr. Mayor. Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second. Double second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, do we? Oh, it's, it's a consent.
Voice move?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We should take pictures, bye-bye.
Oh, yeah, she get a picture.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get down. Oh, you want to go down?
How about with family too?
Family and then Tita. Yeah, Mayor.
And our staff, please. And our staff, please. Off to item number 18, the public hearing on the censure of council member Pamela Di Giovanni pursuant to the city council internal discipline and censure policy. So this meeting of Daly City Council is now called to order. We are here to conduct a formal censure hearing regarding council member Pamela Di Giovanni pursuant to the city's adopted censure policy. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the conduct of council member Di Giovanni constitutes a violation of ethical standards, municipal code, or other rules and policies governing the conduct of elected officials of this council. Just to give you some context and what's operationally, how we're going to go about this, that the legal advisor for the hearing procedure, so because of our city attorney is presenting the investigation findings on the behalf of the city, she is recused from advising the council during this hearing. In her place, we have Mr. Richard Pio Rota, serving as special legal counsel. He's here to advise the council solely on the process and procedure. Mr. Pio Rota will not offer a recommendation on the outcome, but will ensure this hearing is conducted lawfully and fairly in accordance with the censure policy and applicable due process principles. So seeing that council member Di Giovanni is absent, so I'll note for the record that council member Di Giovanni is not present at this time. Notice of the hearing was properly provided and a previous continuance was granted at her request. She was offered additional options to participate, including remote appearance or written statement. So with that, I know there is a statement by council member Di Giovanni. So if anybody wants, or city clerk would like to read.
I have been asked to read the statement sent by Ms. Di Giovanni to my email address today after 12:00 p.m. "I, council member Pamela Di Giovanni, am not present tonight at the city council meeting in regards to the item censure hearing due to health risks and that the censure hearing may be a contributing factor to my health risks. My doctor has informed me my health is at risk. There are more test results coming. I have been in communication with the city attorney regarding my health risk. Therefore, given all things stated in my statement, I respectfully ask that the censure hearing and all things related be halted permanently. Thank you in advance for your consideration in this matter. I have humbly, I have been humbly serving and representing the community of Daly City since 2018 as a city council member, and my plan is and will continue to serve as Daly City council member. Sincerely, Pamela Di Giovanni, council member, Daly City, California."
Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. So with that, unless council would like to continue, we will proceed with the hearing. Are we okay to proceed with the hearing? All right, seeing no objections. Before we do the procedure over, I just want to go over the structure of how this is going to go. So we're going to have a presentation by our city attorney of the investigation and findings, a statement or rebuttal by council member Di Giovanni. Any witnesses called by council member Di Giovanni, if any. Council member questions to the city attorney or the investigator will open it up for a public comment. I have, we have a couple of public comments here, and then we'll have council discussion deliberation. Okay? And so now I invite the city attorney to present the findings of the independent investigation and the applicable standards. Ms. The Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, mayor and members of the city council. As indicated, tonight's proceeding is a public censure of council member Pamela Di Giovanni, conducted under the city's adopted censure policy. The findings of tonight were done by an independent investigator, and the action stems from substantiated claims by city employees regarding ethical misconduct and violations of the Daly City municipal code. By way of overview, as noted, as city attorney, I am presenting the findings of the independent investigation initiated in response to these complaint. And as noted earlier, as the city attorney presented, we do a special legal counsel, Mr. Richard Pio Rota, which would be advising the council on any type of procedure or due process concerns or questions that the council may have. So let's go ahead. Before I start. Before I start, you may be well aware already, a censure is a public, formal, public reprimand of the city council and of the body, of the governing body. It is not a legal action to remove someone from office, but expresses the council's disapproval of behavior that violates legal, ethical, and policy standards in accord to the censorship policy. So I'd like to start off with a summary of timeline events as leading up to this censure hearing that we have, including the independent findings that were found by the investigator. So the investigation started with an initial investigation separate and apart from this in April 2023, which was the first independent investigation by Ellis Investigations, which substantiated abuse of harassment and abuse of power against council member Di Giovanni. In January 2024, the council did have a hearing and a formal admonishment under resolution twenty number twenty, twenty-four, twenty-one, following the independent findings. The summary included a notice of prior admonishment. They adopted the resolution and after an independent investigation found misuse of city property, improper directives, police and staff, and hostile conduct towards the city manager. Despite these findings, council member Di Giovanni refused to participate in the investigation, did not issue an apology, and failed to complete any training that would lead to the admonishment of the resolution. The resolution further indicated that she would be warned that further misconduct would lead to a public censure, which is the hearing this evening. March twenty, March to August 2025, the city did receive multi complaints from city employees that were reported to the human resources department regarding the behavior and disruption of council member Di Giovanni. I'll explain those allegations as we proceed in this, in this hearing. April 2025, as it indicates in the timeline, there was an independent investigation done by Nikki Hall regarding the city complaints, and then this was further reviewed by the ethics committee, which consisted of the mayor and the vice mayor. October 1st, we did issue a notice of censure formally issued to council member Di Giovanni. On October 8th of 2025, we issued a second notice indicating to, at the, at the ethics committee to go ahead and reschedule the hearing at the request of council member Di Giovanni. And so today, we hear, we are here to hear the public censure held before the city council. So first, we have here is sort of the list of the summary of allegations and conclusions that were supported by the findings in the investigation. The first, and I will basically summarize, so the, the report was provided to the council, all of the documentations in a redacted form to protect, since most, all of the complainants were city employees. So in respect of their privacy, we had redacted the names and just for the council to focus on the conduct proceeding. So the first is this allegation of findings to support of an abuse of authority. This incident, one of the incidents indicated in July of 2025 that substantiated that council member Di Giovanni was involved in an interaction with a city employee, an off-duty employee that involved a personal matter between a daughter and another employee, not employee, I'm sorry, members of the public that were engaged in an argument. They were basically involved in another city issue that involved, and they were basically discussing how they were homeless. Council Di Giovanni then noticed the employee and directed her to, to deal with the issue, to drive her, and to basically deal with the matter at hand. This left the employee feeling discomfort since she was off duty and was not working. She reported the encounter, and as a result of it, she felt that she had to assist due to Ms. Di Giovanni's position, but as a result of it, because she felt it was, that she was mandatory and inappropriate for the conduct. As a result of this, the municipal code violation included that she overstepped her boundaries and bypassed the city manager's authority, which is a municipal code where we don't have city council members ordering or directing city staff to do any kind of activities, which makes, make them feel uncomfortable. As a result of this, the employee did feel fearful and was not feeling great about the whole situation. Next, we have reports of harassment and disruptive conducts. As a result of this, the findings support seven complaints at different city events, and I'll just summarize it just so that we can just get a feel, since you do understand these are findings that would be adopted by the council. So in May 2024, we had another city event, which was a Memorial Day event. The finding indicated that she had stated in the presence of employees, talking to employees, that we should get a real Samoan to run for council. This made the employees feel very uncomfortable. They did feel that there was some conduct of racial slurs as a result of that, and also felt that this was a very insensitive comment to make to the city employees. September 26, 2024, we did have an employee service awards. Again, a city employee complained that the council member was outwardly speaking to this person and making them feel uncomfortable in saying that they should vote for a particular council member, a particular candidate for council. This request seemed to be politically charged and directed at the city staff member, also making this employee very uncomfortable since they were working the event. October 2024 was an open house event, which again, I guess, council member Di Giovanni made remarks, directed to employees and weren't really sure why, that they were missing events because you want to go ahead and spend time with your family. This felt uncomfortable, I guess, to the employee, in fact, because they felt they were being sarcastic, dismissive of personal boundaries, and offending the employee as the facts kind of noted. October 19, 2024, we had a Top of the Hill Festival, and in this instance, there were blurred lines of the council member, again, with city staff, where the city employees, she felt the city employees denied them access to a particular area of the council, I'm sorry, of the event. Her response created a hostile environment, causing the staff to feel uncomfortable and undermined. This demonstrated the findings supported a disregard for event protocols and undermined staff authority, making the, the employee feel uncomfortable. At another event on October 2024, which was the Italian flag raising event, Di Giovanni, Ms. Giovanni expressed visible angry, anger and hostility, feeling excluded from a ceremony, and expressed this behavior and expression to many of the employees, targeting some of the employees and feeling disrupt, where they felt disrupted and creating a discomfort as she voiced her anger towards the employees. October 31st, 2024, was a Halloween celebration. There was another instance where council member Di Giovanni had pointed to a staff they felt that they were being singled out, and it felt offensive, where she demonstrated, "Don't let him drink or drive. Don't get a DUI. He shouldn't drink and drive." Those were comments that were made, and I guess were directed at a specific employee. While it may have been perceived to be in a joking manner, it did not appear that way to the employee. November 7, 2024, was a Veterans Day event, again, council member Di Giovanni. Again, we're discussing appropriate and offending remarks to particular individuals at the event, and making, making comments about their physical appearance, and these remarks offended and were considered inappropriate as the employees felt like they were being singled out in this instance. As we go through, there was another hostility and disruptive behavior towards a fellow council member. The findings were at a city-sponsored event where council Ms. Giovanni made insensitive comments directed, I'm sorry, at a public school event where Ms. Council Di Giovanni engaged in loud verbal dispute with another council member. This was in front of another employee who felt uncomfortable in this situation, and also felt it was unprofessional and felt that they should be reprimanded for it. So it did engage in, in settings of feeling disrespected and violations of decorums in a public environment. The witnesses did describe the tone targeted towards the council member as aggressive and inappropriate for a public event. Next, we have a non-compliance with city council prior admonishment. This was actually summarized earlier, that despite being admonished under the resolution, Ms. Giovanni was instructed to engage in sensitivity training and ethics training to deal with the issues and admonishment before the council and failed to comply with any of those requirements. And lastly, we have a refusal to participate in investigation. The investigator documented multiple outreach attempts in August through, July through August, where council member did not respond or participate in the process. It is noted that under the censure policy, council members are expected to act in good faith and cooperate in internal oversight, even if they dispute the allegations that is before them. The findings do show the investigator made three documented attempts to contact, and she failed to respond or make herself available for any of the interviews. I think you can go to the next slide, Elaine. So one of these things that expresses a pattern of conduct is we do have two municipal code violations that are pretty pertinent in the administration of the government as we have it. And first is municipal code 202.08, which is the entrustment of administrative services. And here, we, there was instances that show that council member Di Giovanni directs staff in a personal manner and assuming operational authority, which oversteps the boundaries of the legislative office. And she gave inappropriate staff directives and accessing restricted staff areas. The reasoning behind this ordinance is really to affirm the city manager's authority over city personnel and administrative functions. It does reflect a city manager form of government where the council sets policy and the city manager executes it. The second we have is Daly City Municipal Code 202, 2.02.09, which is the relationship with city staff. Here, the code indicates that neither the city council nor other member thereof shall give orders to any of the subordinates of the city manager. This is ingrained in our city code. The city manager take, shall take his or or orders instruction from the city council as a whole, and no individual council person shall give any orders or instruction to the city manager. This code reinforces the individual council members must not direct staff or interfere with operations, basically to avoid undue influence or harassment of the staff. And this ensures that the non-interference interference has a team-based model for the administration of the city. In summary, it does indicate that several patterns of conduct show censorship for, for council member Di Giovanni, in that facts substantiate that she directed off-study, off-duty staff members to assist in a personal dispute, entered staff areas and gave orders or demands regarding operational decisions, including in community events, and these actions bypasses the city manager's authority, inserting a legislative offer in the administrative chain of command. So this concludes the summary of findings. We do have the investigator who is made available for any questions that you may have as it pertains to the investigation. You can move this. At this point, you notice that there's recommendations and council determination following a public hearing before the council. The recommendation essentially is to affirm the investigation findings and to consider one of the following actions before you. One is to issue a formal public censure associated with associated conditions as evidence gathered in the hearing. Second is to issue a second notice of admonishment, which is another formal admonishment to be issued without censure, serving at a, as a public warning direction to comply with standards. And third is to have no immediate discretion, disciplinary action at this time. I would like to point out, there are certain conditions that can be made if you were to make a finding of a public censure. I'll read this off to you. So the associate conditions, and this is a list of just recommendations for the council to consider. It would be removal from committees and city-sponsored seminars for a period of six months. No preparation of ceremonial certificates by city staffs also for a period of six months. Mandatory HR coordinated trainings, which the, the human resource department can make available. City manager oversight on any direct interactions with city staff, and conditional reinstatements to the roles and participations of, and privileges that have, may be taken only upon completion of the required training and satisfactory review by the council. So at this time, the staff, myself, and the investigator are available for questions. The council would engage in public comment, and at that point, you would engage in the public hearing for council deliberation and determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Attorney. At this time, are there any statements or rebuttal from council member Di Giovanni that she prepared? All right, seeing none, open this up for council member questions to the city attorney or the investigator.
The investigator, I'm sorry. The investigator is available through Zoom.
Yes, I'm here if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Well, since.
Vice Mayor, Sylvester.
I'll kind of start off to break the ice a little bit. Besides the information we received from the city clerk, has council member Di Giovanni been provided opportunity to participate in the investigation?
Yes, and that's noted in the report as well as the investigator, Nikki Hall, can also confirm.
All right, the council member Di Giovanni, besides the city clerk's report, given an opportunity to provide a statement at any time during the investigation, statement?
During the investigation, yes.
Okay.
And to be interviewed as well.
There was one issue to which the incident with the city employee, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, because I, I don't want to look for, I don't want to have any hearsay. I don't know if I should ask this. Oh, no, the report was redacted. But I do, okay, so let me rephrase this another way. At one point, I believe the city manager had written a memo to council member Di Giovanni regarding section 2.02.090, which is council is not to direct staff, and I guess it's to solidify that.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
And that was included in your pocket.
Okay. Can you tell me when the ordinance, the same one, 2.02.090, council shall not direct staff when that was?
Adopted?
Adopted.
A long time ago, but I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
A long time ago, okay, all right. So something that's been on the books.
On the books for a long time, yes.
Thank you for enlightening me. How about the duties of the city manager?
Adopted when the municipal code was adopted, so that has been around for a while.
Adopted when the municipal code was adopted, okay.
As a timeframe, I'd say 20 years.
Oh, oh, I, I did it. I think from what I gather, and I can only surmise this, it was adopted before I got here. So, okay. Halted. Okay. I'd like to defer to my colleagues based upon questions that they may have, but that's all I have at this time.
Councilwoman Peron.
Thank you. I was not part of the council when the first incident happened, and perhaps some people are not aware that. are not aware that this is like part two of a part, a two-part series here of incidents that happened. I was trying to find it on our website. It's my understanding that that report, 200, 300 pages, do you know how many pages?
Yes, that's about right. And it had like 21 allegations on it?
21 allegations, previously. And, and could you tell me what years that those incidents pertain to?
That pertain 2023.
The entire year of 2023?
Entire year of 2023.
Okay.
The prior Ellis investigation occurred in April of 2023, so there may be instances of 2022, towards the end of 2022 to 2023.
Understand. Could you give us a synopsis of what previously happened? Or, I'm sorry, previously was reported on? Is that a right way to ask that report that we're talking about?
Right. So it's been, so just to give you a summary with what they did was basically all of the instances of that investigation, which I don't have in front of me, I apologize, involved misuse of city property, also again improper directives to police and to city staff, and a memo that was issued, there was hostile conduct with the city manager, that was the gist of it. So a lot of it dealt with city employees also coming forward with the complaint, and I know that there was a misuse of the city car, which was part of the investigation that was also found substantiated.
And so when this, this happened, like we're in it right now, now we have this many allegations. Previously, when that was brought up, did Councilmember DiGiovanni, did she speak? Did she respond? Did she, did she, was it the same investigators?
No, it was a different investigator.
Different. But did she participate in the process?
My understanding is she made comments as part of the, the hearing, and she remained there, didn't vote on, on the, the item, but she made comments. And I can't recall all the comments, but I, I think she denied the allegation.
Okay, so when that happened, so we see the process, right? So there was a report, there was allegations, went through the process, she was, she participated. And so what happened? What was the repercussions to her when this happened the first time?
I do want to clarify.
Yes, sorry.
When you said participated in the process, in terms of being present at the hearing before the council.
Uh huh.
She was here, but she did not participate in the interview process for the investigation.
So when they, when they interviewed everybody else?
Right, she did not participate.
She was asked, though.
She was asked several times, yes.
But she would not respond?
Did not respond.
I get it, okay. So let's fast forward to the end of that. So after all that was, everything happened. What happened? What was the, what was the outcome? What was the outcome? What was she, what was she supposed to do when this happened in 2023?
So when this happened in 2023, the council made a determination not to do a public censure, but they did acknowledge that the findings were substantiated, and they narrowed down the allegations to, I believe to six from the 21. And as part of that, they wanted to give her a written warning as a notice of admonishment. So that resolution is attached as part of the packet. And part of that, what they really wanted was an apology and for her to do some training, sensitivity training, ethical trainings, again coordinated through the human resources department.
Okay, so.
And that was it. So there was no public censure in terms of taking away anything from her.
No, I get it. So they, they, the council asked for her to take these classes, sensitivity.
Yes.
Ethics, anger management, whatever it is. So at the end of that, what happened?
She didn't take it. She didn't do any, she didn't do any of it.
She didn't do anything?
No.
Nothing. So because, and I'm just assuming here, because it wasn't addressed, she didn't address what she was supposed to do, now we're here, in essence, doing the same thing, correct?
Yes. Yes, you are.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Councilmember Manala.
Very much, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to ask the investigator, the current investigation, I know there were now two investigations. You did try to reach, uh, you did, Councilmember DiGiovanni?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble hearing you.
You did reach out to Councilmember DiGiovanni?
Yes, I did on, I did two investigations, and I reached out to her on five separate occasions, three occasions for the first investigation, and twice on the second investigation. And HR Director Natalie Sakal also did a reach out for both investigations, and I haven't received any responses.
Thank you. Also, I, you mentioned that the investigation and where we've come to this place, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Peronio. You know, we had an opportunity, I think, in the first investigation, which is, as you mentioned, I think over 100 or so pages of investigation. But we chose the route of admonishment, although at that time, I think the opportunity to do a censorship was on the table. We chose admonishment because we felt that it was an opportunity to give Councilmember DiGiovanni a chance to do the following, as you mentioned, sensitivity training, anger management training. I think when we hear our employees having these interactions, I think we, we want our employees to feel like in any workplace, feel comfortable, feel like they don't, you know, as you mentioned in your report. And so I just wanted to let you know that, Councilmember Peronio, I think that was one of the, you know, we could have went to a censure, but we decided to allow for an admonishment to give a chance to Councilmember DiGiovanni.
I just want to clarify, when you say chance, take those courses so she improves?
Yeah, so that she understands. To have those trainings, how to, you know, interact with employees and be able to, you know, get that training, sensitivity training, anger management training, et cetera, that was on, on that list. And so it's disappointing that we're here today.
Are there any other further questions from my colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Peronio.
The, I think the hardest thing for me is that. Sorry. I, I went through it. And I've gone through it. And the one incident that I mentioned was not, was not reported by me, it was reported by someone else. But regardless, it happened. And that's just one incident. When I, when I applied and was appointed, the one thing I said was, I wanted to work as a team. Because to me, these chambers, this council, it's, it's very special. Because we are able to work in this city to make it better for the residents. I wish that Councilmember DiGiovanni had taken those classes, because then I would not have to go through what I went through, being 100% honest here. And that incident is not the only incident I've had to go through. If I took notes, I'd have a long, I'd have a really long list. But my priority was to try to keep working like a team and overlook, and overlook how I was treated. And I'm not going to get into the depth of it, but just those that are listening, numerous times, at various events. And it's one of the hardest things I had to go through. So I just want to say that. So prefacing, I'm prefacing with that because I feel it's my duty, as I sit here, to protect the staff. We have an amazing staff, and I'm talking from the top to the bottom, and they deserve our utmost respect. And as much as I personally will continue to try to work as a team, I think it's very, very, very important for people to hear that the staff, it took courage to come forth and say something. That's number one. And number two, those are the only the people that came forward. We don't know about the ones that didn't want to get involved and didn't want to be a target. That's important to think about. And the last thing I'm going to say is, and, and it was perfect example when Chief Cameron was sworn in and got his badge. It starts from the top. We have great leadership here from the top, and it filters down to all the staff we have. But it's our duty to protect the staff. That's most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peronio. There are any other further questions for the investigator or for our city attorney? All right, so seeing none, or Vice Mayor?
No, I, I just, no questions.
Okay.
Final comments, but I won't proceed to that area until we hear from the public and anything else, any additional information. Thank you.
Any other further questions? I guess this is my question. Sometimes we would hear that there's a witch hunt, and I guess, I don't know who wanted to take this question, but did the city interfere with any of the investigation in any way?
Should I speak to that?
Either or, just to make it clear.
As an independent investigator, I can assure you that no one from the city interfered with my investigation at all. I was given authority to interview anyone and everyone I wanted to interview.
Thank you. Just want to make that point clear, because sometimes there's always a narrative of a witch hunt, and somebody's out to get them. And just to make it clear that this was an independent investigation outside the city to have a objective stance. All right. Any other further questions?
I don't have any further questions, but I, I just want to acknowledge the mayor and vice mayor, that being on the ethics committee, that you all have been leaders in both of your respective roles to look out for our city. And in that committee, you know, bringing this forth to the council, I just want to acknowledge the work that you've done, and also bringing forth this matter, because it is important. I think you both wouldn't bring it to us as a whole unless you both thought it was imperative to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manala. All right, not seeing any other further questions, we're going to open up for public comment, and we have two comments. First speaker is Robert Quinn. So you have two minutes to share your comments. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My wife and myself, we've, we helped Jocelyn and Glenn and Pam with their elections, help them get elected, and we're very, you know, we're proud about that. And, you know, I, from what I've seen, Pam's always stood up for the police, the firemen, the nurses, seat in hospital, and much-needed emergency room up there. And I've known Pam since 2018, about as long as I've known the rest of you, the city council members. And I've always known her to be, you know, an upright, moral and ethical person. I'm shocked to hear the allegations against her. And, but that's why I'm here, I'm just standing up for her as no one else is, is going to do that for her. I don't know if anyone will, but I want to do it. And I would ask that if you do this censure, that you have mercy on her, and maybe for a shorter period of time, maybe don't do all the things, but if she gets, needs to get admonished or whatever, I would ask for a little mercy for her. And once in a while, we all need remedial training, I know I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Next up, we have Brian Padilla. Oh, gotcha. Thank you for informing. So not seeing any other comments, we'll get down to the last section, council discussion deliberation. Is this what we were looking at in terms of the one slide with the three different options? The different, I think it was like the six months, right? I think.
You have that slide that has what action, and then you have the slide that talks about what conditions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we begin deliberation and deciding which option we're going to choose, I feel that I should provide my commentary on what I have seen, heard, and based upon what was given to us this evening. In regards to Councilmember DiGiovanni, I, what I've seen is she's very ethical, and she does seem, well, from what I've observed, I haven't observed any ethical violations, any that I have observed. But what I have observed is her demeanor and some of her actions, what she does out in public. And many perceive the words and statements that you make in different ways, whereas someone can say something about me and I can probably take it, as I mentioned. As I mentioned earlier this evening about the police officers, when people call you names, your peace cannot be disturbed. But it does not apply to everyone. Everybody has, they perceive statements that someone else makes in different ways and it can really affect them. What is offensive to one is not necessarily offensive to someone else. So that's statements. Sometimes folks may say the wrong things and not understand that they are saying the wrong things. But in this particular investigation, it was not only statements, but actual actions that transpired after a statement was made. Whether it was just a statement, whether it was in order to do something, but the mere fact that someone felt obligated to do it. And that's why I have a little note here, staff training. I think, I mean, I love our staff. It only takes one mistake. But I think the ordinance that I asked the city attorney, both ordinances, 2.02080 and 2.02090, I think that needs to be reiterated to staff for them to know. Because if I didn't know these two existed and I was staff, I'd do my best to try to keep city council and anyone happy and try to do it. But what would be the end result for me? Maybe it'd be something that it would not pass the SWAN test. For those of you who don't know, the SWAN test is sleep well at night. And, but again, everybody perceives things differently. I believe in freedom of speech, but you can only, you can only take that so far. It's again, whatever it is that you say. What I've seen, and I'm about to close on these last three points. What I've seen is a pattern since 2023. And until the investigation that has led up to us having to discuss this, this I see and believe it's a pattern. In making my decision, I'm going to take into account what happened at the last investigation in 2023. And I'm a firm believer that when you back someone up against the wall, they're going to come out as fright or flight and they're going to come out fighting. But I believe we've given that opportunity back in 2023. We have asked for a correction in behavior. And the correction was attend training, a letter of apology. And we believe that a written admonishment was sufficient. So subsequently not backing someone up against the wall. But looks like 2023 did not have no teeth. It didn't have no area of enforcement. So tonight, or at least my feeling is, we've got to add more teeth to our decision. I am so sorry that this had come up. But at the same time, we would be sorry if we didn't do anything. There's a term liability. And I'm deeply, deeply concerned about liability and our staff. So that's all I have at this particular time, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present my thoughts about this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other further comments, discussions or deliberation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, we all have the privilege of being elected to the seats that we're in. And but that doesn't mean we have the authority to abuse our power. And when we look at the investigations previously, which have hundreds of pages, and now that we're here again, you know, I think, you know, I have to concur with the Vice Mayor. I mentioned it earlier, we had an opportunity to do a censorship, but we decided to do an admonishment. And why? Because we wanted to give Councilmember De Giovanni a chance. When we're talking about our staff and our workers, I'm going to have to agree with Councilmember Pranay. We have to protect our staff. We need to ensure that they feel safe. They, we need to make sure that they feel, they don't feel uncomfortable in their workplace, whether it's an event or even when they're out on their personal time. So what, what, what we have here is, I think we need to look at it seriously because this is not, this is, when I look at the investigation, like this is multiple workers, multiple staff, right? So it's not just one individual. This is not just one incident. This has shown a pattern as Vice Mayor mentioned. And so you know, I'd like to hear from my colleagues as well, but I feel that we do have a duty to protect our staff and that as elected officials, we are held to a higher standard to be able to not abuse the roles that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Are there any other comments or deliberations?
I'll share my statements. I have three questions. Number one, I asked this in 2023 and I ask this now, was there an apology? No. Question number two, has there been improvement from 2023? And I guess after case, after case, after case, no. And then number three, were the conditions of admonishment from 2023 where they met? No. And I think that when we talk about being in these positions of power, we have to honor the positions that we have with courage, with boldness, with a certain standard that for the next people that come into our positions, that we shouldn't be doing this. This should be common sense thinking. Right? And then moving forward, I do hope for there is reconciliation. I do hope that there's growth. I do hope that there's lessons learned. But it starts with number one accountability. Number one apologizing because there was a lot of harm that's being, that's been thrown around. And just like what Councilmember Pranay said, there's probably countless numbers of other cases that people never said anything because we hold positions of power. And when those abuses of power happen, there is a certain sense of guilt, a certain sense of discouragement. Or even feeling like people will have some sort of aim at them. And so for me, we have to set a sense of, set a sense of accountability. And number one, we have to protect our workers of Daly City. They should feel like when they come into these doors that they feel like this is theirs. You know, their, their job is really hard as it is. And to have other folks hounding them, exploiting them, they are not our slaves. They are human beings. They have families. And they have a certain pride and responsibility that they take in their positions, no matter what positions they have on council, I mean, on, in the city or even on council. And so with that, we see five different things, or five different items of public censorship. I just want to ask my council members if there's, are these fair? Do we, should we increase it? Should we take away something from the list here? Just wanting some guidance on that.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rose, would you be so kind to go back one slide because we had three options? Right, so what I would like to do with my colleagues is let's decide on an option. Then we can visit the particular areas of each option. I'll start off and say, given the information that we have, that we should move towards formal public censure. Now, I, I, I don't know if I need, maybe we should get consensus before we decide and allow everyone to speak on that.
And may I just?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilmember Prime.
I'm hearing what you say. Did you want us to vote on like, let's vote one, two or three, and then we move to the next step?
I guess we'll seek guidance from
Yes, please.
Mr. Pirota. Do we vote on this or do we just come with a consensus or?
So you can certainly come to two votes and you could take this as our formal public censure and then move to the next slide to choose which conditions you wish to add and that'll form the basis of a resolution.
Do you recommend having a voice vote on this particular matter? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pirota. All right, so Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester expressed his thoughts of a formal public censure issued to, issued to Councilmember De Giovanni and adopt associated conditions.
I believe you would need a second.
Yeah, do we need a second?
I'd like to give a second.
Okay, so we have a first by Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester and a second by Councilmember Pranay. Ms. City Clerk, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Pranay?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
And so this moves on to the second level of, and so we have the conditions here. Yes, Councilmember Prime.
My quick question is, these five conditions that are here, where did they come from? Yeah, I'm just.
They were suggestions that you can consider because in a public censure, you take away a privilege or something away from the council member. So these are just recommendations and suggestions that I've seen in other patterns of formal censures that I've seen.
Thank you, Rose.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Pranay also, when we met, these were particular options that was possibly discussed. We're definitely open as a body to decide if it should be more. We needed some help there. Okay. I've read each one of the options. Now, my concern is I see the term six months. I would hope that option, condition number five addresses if there's non-compliance within six months. Hopefully I'm correct. If we had, if we didn't, if we don't see any movement in those particular areas, do we increase it another six months or it stays indefinite until there's a?
So the suggestion as it's stated is that you will not have reinstatement of those roles and participation. So for instance, committees and sponsored seminars, certificates, if you do not do any of the trainings, a minimum of six months, you will not get reinstated. You won't be on any committees and you won't be any censor, city-sponsored seminars. So you, the, the training is a condition of being reinstated to the committees and city-sponsored seminars.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to give a comment on that. And Councilmember Pranay, I guess you're going to chime in too, which is good, but this is my thought. Enforcing or putting these conditions on is definitely going to put a strain on us as well because we'll have to fill in those gaps. But at the same time, our main hope that there is corrective action being done and all the better. But just be aware and I'm ready, I'm willing and I'm able to take on the extra work if, if it comes to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pranay.
Should this go as we hope, right, which is Councilmember De Giovanni takes the courses and the classes and, and works for the improvement? Would the six months still be in effect? Like regardless, you know, there's six months, boom, and then she takes care of stuff. And then after six months, things come back.
After six months, if she takes the training, yes. But it's a minimum of six months as taking away the privilege. So even if, for instance, she were to take the courses next month and it's all done, you still have a minimum of six months.
I see. Thank you. That's clarification.
That's how it's suggested.
No, I understand. Thank you so much.
I have one quick question for number three. The mandatory HR coordinated trainings, are they, is it those or those are just examples or is there like a set?
Those are examples and the HR department does have a series of trainings that are made available.
Okay, and then who determines which trainings she, that Councilmember De Giovanni would be recommended?
Well, we coordinated with HR, but those are sort of the scope of the trainings and I guess we could find additional trainings if needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
Can we add one more condition? It's just a suggestion. I made mention of the ordinances earlier and I says that was probably on there before I got on the council. Can we ensure that Councilmember De Giovanni gets a physical copy of the ordinance? I remember when I used to work, whenever these notices came out, I used to get them and I have to initial that I got it. I would ask that the Senate Councilmember De Giovanni initial that she's received it. If she refuses to initial, then we can have a witness observe her getting a copy of the ordinance and that's good enough. Because you can't, I don't think you can force anyone to sign anything. But just the actual copy of the ordinance, both ordinances as a reminder. Because I think you have to know why you're putting all these conditions. What's the reason? Because of the ordinance.
So there's an additional condition for providing a physical copy with initial or even a wit, with a witness?
Oh, a witness.
Yes. All right. So we have six conditions. Are there any other modifications, additions, subtractions to the recommended consideration?
How about the use of a city vehicle? How about the use of a city vehicle? Correct me if I'm wrong, but back in 2023, there was, uh, of, uh, alleged violation of misuse of the city vehicle for personal reasons, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
I'm okay with that as well.
Are you looking at the six months also?
Yeah, six months as well. Are there any other comments, questions regarding, um, now the seven conditions?
Pardon me, to the mayor.
Councilmember?
There was something, there was something you said, sorry, or somebody said, was the need for an apology? That's important. Who's, did you?
Oh, I did.
You did. Yeah, that's something that might be, it's important.
You forced them to?
You can't force people to apologize, but, but I, I, I think that that's important, you know? That's all, sorry, thank you.
Did you mean like a formal letter of apology, or maybe just a statement here of the dais?
Yeah.
I mean, I would guess even a formal, even just on the di, I, oh, I take recognition.
I think, I hear you, because that's a reconciliation portion that Mayor is mentioning.
Yeah.
Right? Um, he hopes that there's some reconciliation, and so that would be a part of it where a formal apology.
I guess my own question would be, um, will there be a time constraint for that? Because what if there's no compliance?
I mean, you would hope that taking these HR trainings, especially about ethics and about conduct and sensitivity, that you would hope that going through the process, you know, because it's not like a quick one, two, three, I'm sure it's, it's, it's a process. Just going through the process of these, the training, you hope something sticks. So that we don't have to go through this again, right? And so I would hope if someone went through all these courses that are recommended, that they would hopefully come to the realization, and it's only a hope that, you know, hey, you know, that might be part of the learning process, is all. Thank you.
Just a point of order, just to apologize. I want to caution you that, um, she still has a possessive first amendment right to not speak. So certainly, I don't believe, my advice would be to not condition it, but to urge it. And that certainly, but if you made it a condition, I do believe that there is some exposure as to compelled speech. So I would just recommend instead an urge to apologize. I think you did identify it. You can't force someone to apologize.
I understand, I understand.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, that's another, um, another recommending condition is to urge for upon apology? Is that okay with everybody?
Uh, thank you, attorney. That's an excellent suggestion. I mean, we can urge, and if it's done, it will go a long way, especially in my eyes too, and say, hey, you know, this person's actually taking an initiative. But if it doesn't happen, well, we just document it, but those are the conditions.
Before we move on to, um, formalizing these, these conditions, my question is, uh, can anybody describe the coordinated trainings? Is this in person? Is this online? I just want it to be effective for Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Do you have any? Natalie is here.
Come on down, Natalie.
She did the research.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. Um, the trainings can be either in person or online, whichever is more convenient, but we do have both as, as an option.
And then if it's a training, do they come here to Daly City, or does Councilmember Di Giovanni have to venture out?
We can have them in person here at the city.
Wow.
Just want to make it accessible.
In addition to online options.
Okay. That's good to know. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I think, um, that's a great question. I know that, um, it's, it's important to provide an alternative to technology. I think that there has been in the past, needed some assistance with staff with technology, and so, um, providing an option in person, I think that, uh, you know, may be helpful to council member.
Okay. Thank you, Natalie. All right, um, are there any other, um, further discussions? Okay, um, we'll go ahead with a, of, another roll call vote. So can I get a motion to adopt these five, including, um, ensuring that Councilmember Di Giovanni will receive a physical copy, initial with a witness, um, another condition of use of city vehicle for six months, and an urge for an apology? Is that correct?
She's prohibited from using a city vehicle for six months.
Prohibited, yeah. My bad, yeah, forgot that key word, prohibited from city, city vehicle. All right, um, can I get a motion, um, for those conditions, for the, for adoption?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make the motion.
I'll go ahead and second it. So roll call vote, please, Ms. City Clerk.
Ms. Perano?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for, um, this censure. It's, I don't think it's an easy, um, process, all sides of the coin. And I just thank you for staff, um, attorney, Mr. Pioroda for coming through, and city attorney, staff for, um, the investigator, and hopefully we see reconciliation growth and, um, some community that comes out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, uh, we're not over yet, we're not done yet, so, uh, we, we are now heading on to item number nineteen. Communications use permit UPR dash zero one dash twenty-three dash zero one six zero four four, and design review DR dash zero one two three dash zero one six zero four six. Service station reconstruction at one oh one South Mayfair Avenue, and we got Mr. Sam Fielding. And thank you for staying up with us all night long.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, uh, Mayor Dallas McBoyle, and Vice Mayor, and city council members, city manager, and members of the public. The item before you this evening are the planning entitlements of a use permit and design review for the demolition of an existing gas station and snack shop, and new construction of a gas station, convenience store, and car wash. The proposed project entails the demolition of the existing gas station with a small check garage and snack shop, and the proposed construction of a new service station, convenience store, and car wash on an approximately twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot lot. It will increase the fuel service aisles from four to eight aisles, and includes the new canopy and service pumps. There's also a new larger convenience store and car wash, new landscaping plants and ground cover vegetation, and new signage, streetscape, and pedestrian improvements. These are the planning entitlements that are required, a use permit and design review. This is the project timeline. We received the application in December twenty twenty-two. And, uh, in January of twenty twenty-four, technical studies began for the noise and vibration assessment, hydrology and hydraulic study, geotechnical study, traffic memo, utility study, and the waste service investigation. The planning entitlement review was deemed complete August eighth of twenty twenty-five. And then the planning commission hearing was held on October seventh with a recommendation to the city council for approval. These are some details about the project. It entails a new service station with a three thousand two square foot canopy. Uh, as mentioned before, the increasing the service aisles from four to eight, and providing new service pumps and then aisle, new aisle configuration. A convenience store, uh, single-story, two thousand three hundred four square feet, that would operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days per year. Uh, nine hundred seventy-one square foot car washed, uh, with a sound wall exiting the car wash lane. The proposed operational hours are eight AM to nine PM, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Then we have the streetscape and pedestrian improvements that include a new sidewalk, connecting to the Poncetta Drive, uh, Westlake Apartments, new driveways, medians, and islands. And then landscaping, including, uh, variety of trees, shrubs, and ground cover plants on the site, total of four hundred sixty-two square feet. And then the new signage, which includes a monument signs, canopy signs, wall signs, and entry signs. This is the project site located on the southwest corner of South Mayfair Avenue and Poncetta Drive, south of John Daly Boulevard. The project site is an existing service station located at the intersection of South Mayfair Avenue and Poncetta Drive, bordered by John Daly Boulevard and single-family residences to the north, the Boulevard Restaurant, and I two eighty to the east, the Westlake Residential Development, and Lake Merced Golf Course to the south, and multifamily apartments to the west. One oh one South Mayfair Avenue is designated commercial service in the general plan and zoned light commercial. The land use designation is service commercial, and again, the zoning is light commercial. These are some, uh, staff site photos of the site, uh, looking southwest, uh, looking to the north, and looking west, and looking south. And then the, the last photo is a view looking southeast. And these are existing site photos provided by the applicant. And the site, the photo in the middle shows the, the plans, uh, overlaying over the site. This is the existing site, so you'll notice the configuration of the, the, the existing, uh, snack shop, and then the gas station pumps. And this is the proposed site plan. The project will have seventeen parking spaces, including for fueling, and eight parking spaces for the convenience store. It'll increase the aisles from four to eight, and then includes new medians and islands, and new ADA compliant sidewalk and driveways. This is the, uh, location of the convenience store and the car wash, uh, floor plan. So the, the entrance to the car wash will be off of Mayfair Avenue. Use that pointer here, located here. And then this is the entrance to the car wash, coming out, exiting on the southern, uh, southwest corner of the project site. Planning staff reviewed the design and exterior materials for the proposed convenience store and car wash in accordance with Daly City Municipal Code Objective Design Review standards. The materials for the new convenience store and car wash include a combination of white and gray colors for the fascia, cement plaster, and tan painted plank lap siding. Planning staff determined that the design meets the Daly City Municipal Code design requirements and supports the design and exterior materials for the project. This is the east and south elevations, uh, the top showing the convenience store, and then the, uh, south elevation. This is the west and north elevations, and you'll notice it includes a metal decorative trellis that adds architectural detail and breaks up the wall siding space of the convenience store. These are the, this is the fuel canopy. This slide shows the new sidewalks, driveways, curb ramps, and traffic circulation arrows and landscape areas. Also, there's a new monument sign located at the northeast, northeast corner, and a new price sign at the northwest corner. And this is the southern half of the project site, again, showing the new sidewalks and driveways, uh, curb ramps, and landscape areas. And I'd like to point out also the connection here. This is a new driveway, and this will connect an ADA, uh, um, designed sidewalk, uh, from here to the, to the apartments located to the south. Currently, there's no, there's no sidewalk along this stretch of, uh, Poncetta Drive. So the project will include upgrades to connecting the, uh, the gas station to the apartments. Um, there's also going to be, um, exit only, do not enter signage, and one-way traffic signage to alert motors that the lane down here where the, the driveway, where you come out from the driveway, this is one-way coming out. And then it's, it's two-way at this point, um, to remove the trash here. This is the garbage, um, location, and then for vehicles to enter here to go to the convenience store. But basically, from this point here, this is all one-way exiting, and the signage, signage will, will indicate that. Uh, the project also, uh, includes four hundred sixty-two square feet of new landscaping, including a variety of trees, shrubs, and ground cover on the site, exceeding the two percent parking lot landscape mandated by the zoning ordinance. The tree species selected are Muskogee crepe myrtle and Sweet Bay trees, shrubs, purple hobseed bush, and Boston ivy, and ground cover of rosemary, myoporum, large cape rush, and moonstruck marigold. As part of the project, uh, staff required a noise and vibration assessment. This was prepared by, uh, the consultant Dudek. And the report reviewed applicable city standards and criteria of the existing noise environment, and used modeling to predict noise, predict noise impacts and effects associated with the proposed project. The assessment evaluated potential traffic noise, construction noise, car wash noise, and vibration. Uh, the study found that, uh, and concluded that the project would not cause a discernible traffic noise increase at the residential properties adjacent to the project, and that construction noise levels, even at the closest residences, would not be considered significant temporary noise impact, especially with the prohibition against nighttime construction. The car wash noise, uh, will, uh, be reduced to less than significant with the recommended noise barrier wall, uh, at the car wash exit. The proposed project does not incorporate any project elements that would generate substantial groundboard noise and vibration levels during its long-term operation. Therefore, this potential environmental impact would be less than significant. This slide, uh, I just pull up here that shows the location of that, uh, sound wall, uh, highlighted by the circle here. So where the vehicle exits the car wash here, there's going to be an eight-inch-thick, seven-foot-high, thirty-four-foot-long mason wall constructed along here that will reduce, uh, any noise, uh, to, to below seventy decibels. Planning staff reviewed the proposed project and determined it will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore is exempt from the provisions of SEQA per section fifteen three oh two, replacement or reconstruction class two B, which is a replacement of a commercial structure with a new structure substantially the same size, purpose, and capacity. Uh, staff is recommending that, uh, the city council, uh, find that the, the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general wel, welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. And staff has further determined that the proposed project would not be injurious or detrimental to the property and improvements in the neighborhood, or result in substantial environmental damage or disturbance, given the conditions of the approval for the project. Uh, staff recommends that the city council adopt the following findings. Outline the staff report. Subsequent to the planning, uh, commission hearing, the app- Subsequent to the planning commission hearing, the applicant has requested that the condition of approval that terminates after one year for the use permit and the design review, they would like to request that city council extend that for an additional year. So instead of the, the, the approval being to, through 2026, October 27th, they would go through October 27th to 2027. And this is due to the complexity of the project in terms of the permits required, securing all the permits and the construction vendors and, and basically the process of actually starting the construction, they're going to need an additional time, one, one year, they're going to need at least two years, I believe. So this is one item that they're requesting that be modified with the condition of approval. So staff recommends the city council approve the use permit and design review permit to allow a new service station, convenience store, and car wash at 101 South Mayfair, Mayfair Avenue. This concludes the presentation. I have the project applicant and also the property owner here to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm also available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sam. First question, Councilmember Pranay.
So first of all, like, it's funny, I listened to the, the planning commission meetings. So when this started, I was like, why is this so familiar? It's one of those evenings, you know, as the clock keeps ticking. But I did listen to the meeting, and, which was nice because I could listen to all the questions everybody gave, so wanted to thank you guys for the meeting. But I do still have some questions, and I'll preface this by saying, on East Market, there's a car wash, and I live up the street. So depending how the wind blows, and if my windows are on, are open, or even if they're not, sometimes I hear the car wash, and I'm a long block away. And so sometimes, for a little while, even though it was 8:00, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., roughly the same, sometimes they would sneak in a little early and do it like at 6:00 on a Sunday, which was no fun. So I'm just hoping you guys stick with your timeline for, for those who live around. So that's number one. Also, thank you for the upgrades in the sidewalk, I appreciate that. But that intersection, I don't know, well, I go to Boulevard, someone's smiling over there. Is it the wind or what? Sometimes you can't see the light to turn, like, you, you kind of go, yeah, okay, they're going, okay, oh, now I think it's my turn. And I wonder if that can be reviewed or looked at, because I'm, I'm going to guess we're going to have more vehicles once this opens, right? You're going to have more gas pumps, you're going to have a, you know, a nice store there, you're going to have a car wash. So we would hope more people come, right? We want that. So I'm just asking the city if you could relook at the signal right there, you know, when you're leaving and you want to get on John Daly? That little signal right there is, is, is a problem. I don't know if anybody else has that problem, but it's a problem. So I was just going to respectfully ask if perhaps it can be, you know, studied, looked at. So that's that. And then the sound wall, you said it's a mason wall? Is it like, kind of like cement, like that kind of wall? And how would that keep the sound and not like echo off like a freeway? You know?
Yeah, I mean, I have the applicant here that could probably speak more to the, to the wall, like the design and materials, but basically the, the modeling that the, the consultant did, looking at the noise and the vibration, this was the recommended sort of material and length, width, and, and height of the wall that they recommended based on their modeling that will actually reduce the decibel levels below 70, which meets our, our code require, our general plan requirement as far as noise. But I do have the applicant that could provide a little bit more information about that.
Because there's a lot of apartments, it's like right there, housing right there, that's, I would be concerned for them, because I don't know if their windows are one pane or two, because if it's old doleger, might be one. So, you know, the sound, that's, you know. The other thing is, I will guess, because you ever watch that program where they tell you how things are made? So one time they showed how do they make a car wash? I know, go figure, right? And so it was very interesting to watch the process, and I'm guessing as, like cars, as it progresses, they get quieter and more efficient, I would assume, right?
Yes. I'll have the applicant also speak to that because he can talk a little bit more about the, the newer technologies that the car washes are using now that are a lot quieter, and so he'd be able to provide more information about that.
And water.
Yeah, and how the water operations.
Right. And so the last thing, the reason I ask these questions, like, like I prefaced in the beginning is, I live a long block from the car wash at the Shell Station, and I can hear it. So in your regard, it's a great corner for what you're offering us, I think it's fabulous, but I would just worry about those, the houses and the apartments, that's it. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pranay. Any other questions? Councilmember Manala.
So does that mean the smog, smog is no longer going to be there?
Yes, it's not. But I, I think in the, in the, in the presentation of the planning commission, the owner mentioned that they're looking at seeing if there's another location that the smog check people might be able to go to.
Yeah, I just know that that was like the staple.
But they will be, they will be.
I see a lot of, like, there's not a lot of people in the audiences right now, but there's like two nodding their heads in the back and, and saying like, you know, it's been kind of ever since I learned how to drive and got a car where I would go to, so it's great to hear that there's going to be a search for another location. But it is great to have more options with car washes, especially around that area. And so, yeah, yes, that's, yeah, that was my question. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Lindsey Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's funny to go last because both Councilmember Pranay and Councilmember Manalo brought up the question that I was asking or going to ask, so I just need a little bit further clarification. Councilmember Pranay had made mention, and I saw on a slide there of the residences along the, that would probably be the south wall as you are exiting the car wash heading in So if you look at the far left side, there are residences, and the cars are going through and they're moving in, in, I guess, an easterly direction? What's the distance between the, between the residence and that wall there? Five feet, seven feet? Yeah, you got the pointer right, right there. What's the distance between the car wash and the residence there? Five feet?
About five feet, yep.
All right. Which leads me to the question, you had made mention about 70 decibels. Is that normal for a car wash? 70 decibels? You said that's as per certain regulations, I mean, where did that number come from?
So in the general plan, the, our, the Daly City's general plan establishes an exterior noise level standard and maximum allowable noise exposure level for residential use of no more than 70 decibels. So by installing this recommended noise barrier wall along this stretch here, the noise level is reduced below that, it's below, it'll be, it'll be below the 70. It'll be, let's see, yeah, it, I can pull up the actual study itself that has a specific on that, but it reduces it below the 70, which is considered less than significant, and it, it's, it meets our requirement.
Okay, okay. And the reason why I'm taking, taking it from that wall is because usually at the last stage, that's when the blowers come on, so that's probably why they're putting the wall there rather than all the way along down the line. So I'm guessing it's because of the blowers. Now to the other issue about Councilmember Pranay, I know where Councilmember Pranay lives, down the block, a block and a half away. I live closer, and that's why I asked about the decibels, because if Councilmember Pranay could hear it, and I don't, I'm just wondering, yeah, it's the way the wind blows. So I have to agree, I know where she was coming from. Now as for Councilmember Manalo, yep, I took my cars there for smog as well, if they're losing that, okay? Now, on the other hand, I'm, I'm very open to business because I like the idea of the parking spots, and I know that cars traveling southbound on Poncetta, making the right turn to go eastbound on Mayfair, I mean, southbound on Poncetta to make a left turn to go eastbound, you get a traffic tie-up there. And I'm hoping that the way this is set up as a convenience store, you might alleviate part of that traffic pileup, because folks would probably say, oh, boy, instead of rushing off to work, I'm going to just keep going straight, and I'm going to go into the convenience store, and I'm going to get some gas. So I'm looking at the positive side to that. And the same thing where vehicles going northbound on Poncetta, northbound, that's coming from the restaurant and going northbound to make a right turn, if it's, if it's full of traffic, maybe the convenience store will help alleviate some of that traffic for maybe five or 10 minutes. So, you know, I'm trying to think of the good here on both sides, so that's just something. But the 70 decibels, if you say it's written, I have to take your word for it and know that that's the right thing. As Councilmember Pranay says, I appreciate that pedestrian walkway, because you have a lot of folks who go over to the Boulevard Restaurant, and that walkway would be a great, great addition. So, I mean, you know, I may come visit you guys as well. So when you see me over there, I remember you, and, you know, kind of looking forward. So that's the question that I have, and I would definitely recommend giving the two-year permit, because got to get going and start up, and, and I definitely support it.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think the, the design of this, of the site now, proposed design, there's, there's the three driveways, and I believe they're wider now than, than the existing, and they're two, you know, they're two-way here, there are one-way in here, because you have the median here, so, and then there's two-way here, so there's a lot more ways to get into the site, you know, compared to the existing, because it's, the driveway's a little bit wider.
Well, thank you, Mr. Felding, that's good to know. I, if I, if I visit.
I think the configuration's going to be more efficient.
Oh, yeah, I agree. And I won't be going there to get gas, I'll be going there to the convenience store because I drive electric. Now, if you're going to put an electric charger there, maybe I may, you know. Thank you.
Councilmember Manala.
It just came, it came to mind that because of the expansion of the convenience store, you're in like a really ideal location. I mean, really, just with all of the apartments around there, I mean, it, yeah, I think you're going to have great business with an expanded convenience store there. I mean, I know when you're getting gas, you want, you're thirsty, it's not always hot in Daly City, but you know, you want to grab something there, and there's just so many apartments around. And so I think that's really great that there's an expansion there. I know sometimes folks that go to Boulevard, like, oh, no, I need gas. They head over there, and so I think any enhancement in particularly businesses, we need it, and this is a huge enhancement around an amenity for the residents as well as those that are visiting us, right? You're so close to a freeway as well.
Yeah.
Sometimes when people are heading out either towards San Francisco or towards San Jose, that, that area to get gas before you head out is, is very strategic. So I wish you well, I'm, I'm a proponent for it as well, so thank you.
I think it's a marvelous project as well. When I saw this on the agenda item, I was, my first thought that came to my mind was, was there enough space? Right? Because when we look at that space, I think this is just an efficient use of the land. I, I mean, I just got gas today, like, yesterday, right? And so my, my question is, so in terms of the construction of it, will there be like a leveling of the grading? Because I know one side, I feel like if I lean over to one side, you could have your car tumble to one side, especially with that area where the, the car wash is supposed to be. So are we going to level all that off? And, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Muthana Ibrahim, I'm the architect of the project. Yes, as far as the car wash will be level area, but it's going to be like steps, the, the canopy will be leveled, when you park, your car's not going to roll down, down the hill, it's going to stop, you get, be comfortable getting gas. Same thing with the store, but, you know, in between Poncetta and the canopy, there is some 5% slope between the canopy and the store, 5% slope to accommodate ADA compliance. And I just want to mention, we're not increasing the number of pumps. There is currently four pumps, we're doing four pumps, but we are improving the circulation on-site. Currently, you have only four lanes, you have to line up to get gas. In this situation, you do not have to. You enter from the driveway, you have eight option, eight lanes to pick. Anyone empty, you go to it. So it's easier coming in and out.
Are there any other further questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the findings and?
Motion to adopt findings?
And the project, and approve the.
And approve the project.
Glenn Sylvester, I, I'll second the motion with a condition, because the original motion, if I'm not mistaken, is for a permit for one year, but to amend it to two years as part of the motion.
Yes.
I'm open with a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo.
So with that, can we have a roll call vote? City Clerk.
Ms. Pranay?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Heading off to item number 20, council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports?
Thank you, ma'am.
Of course.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you for staying late with us.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, then. Mayor, you missed a pub, a period, appointments.
Appointments, thank you, the City Clerk. Appointments, are there any appointments for this meeting, for any boards, commissions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to item number 20, council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Pranay.
Well, I attended the illegal dumping meeting with a, a, a nice number of staff, I would say, Leilani, was there probably 10, 12 people in attendance? Yeah, and I just wanted to say that, that's one of my little pet peeves, this illegal dumping. So I was honored to be able to sit with so many that have been working so hard and that are working hard towards, towards rectifying this. So I did attend that meeting, thank you very much, and it was very informative, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pranay. Are there any other city council? Are there any other City Council Reports, or Council Committee Reports, sorry? Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester.
No report, Mr. Mayor, but I wanna comment on Councilmember Perano about the illegal cleanup. I wanna say thank you for your advocacy, because I see all your posts on Facebook, this is not good in our city, I see them all, so keep up the great work, and thank you for sharing that.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other Council Committee Reports? Seeing none, we'll go down to item number 21, City Council Reports. Are there any City Council Reports? Councilmember, Councilwoman Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to share that I was a guest speaker at Life Moves. Life Moves is an amazing organization to help those that may be houseless or homeless to get stable housing for their first Filipino-American History Month event that coincided with their Hispanic Heritage Month event. But it was really wonderful to meet the staff that really helped families find secure homes and get the case management. You could feel at Life Moves that they have a cultural, culture of care there. Also, I know that this event was in South San Francisco, but the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce had their annual event at the Event Center. But when we talk about economic development, we have to look at it also as a very regional approach, that if we work together, we're able to build more. And so I was very historic with over their, I think, 100, over 100-year establishment. There was a first Filipina board chair, Dani, who does events planning, and so congratulations to her. Also, I was a 10th anniversary of Future Lab, which really is an initiative of Genentech, to be able to reach out to students and really engage them into the biotech field. And then at the 10th anniversary of middle college at Skyline College, which is such a phenomenal program, really, where if you are a junior in high school, you can take college credit courses and actually get a lot of your general coursework done. And to see it continue, and I know I saw Councilmember Perano there, as well as Rihanna, who is a graduate of middle college program as well. And I know that Mayor, you know, as a staff at Skyline College, knows very well how impactful that program is. Not only saving money, but saving time, I mean, so there's so many elements to it.
I'm so huge. I don't mean to interrupt, my granddaughter's in this program, and she's in her senior year, she started in her junior year, and exactly what you're saying, Councilmember Manalo, it is an amazing program, 10 years, so I just wanna throw it in, I'm witnessing it. As she is going through it, it was the best thing ever, so, thank you for bringing that up, thank you.
Of course, no, it's just a wonderful program, and now it's not, you know, it started off in the South San Francisco district, but now it's also with the Jefferson Union High School District as well. And so, also, huge congratulations to City Manager Tom Piccolati, Leilani, Maybel, and Rihanna, and the entire Daly City, I think, staff. All right, I feel like, and I don't even say why, right? Everyone knows why they're clapping, for like the phenomenal Top of the Hill Festival. When you talk about now Daly City being a destination, it's, it was definitely a destination. And so huge kudos, because I know that it was every part of the city staff that really put that together, and you saw how everyone was there, helping out and making sure everything was safe. It's phenomenal that there was no incident at all, and that when you, it just, it was just so beautiful. So small businesses were bustling, residents were dancing, children were playing, and elders were smiling. And it was a beautiful epic day in Daly City. You know, I know that Mayor and I had a moment at the very end, like when everything was done, and we looked at each other and was like, wow, did that just really happen? And that was the same feeling for many of the residents that have grown up in Daly City as well, and have come back. It was like a reunion for many generations, because people were like, I haven't seen you for so long, and it just really brought so much joy, I say joy, in the midst of what's happening on many levels. Just in our immigrant community, I felt that, you know, many folks were at different events around, I would say, just in all the different counties. But I felt like Daly City had that event, but that event was really standing up together in joy amidst what's happening around us. And so I just wanted to say, wow, thank you so much, that's embedded in my mind, and I know it's embedded in so many others. And I know last year, they're like, at 1 o'clock, they're like, oh, can we have this again? And I feel like this time, they're like, now they're asking, like, they're like, oh, they're definitely... So the people that missed out last year came, and then the people that missed out again were like, I missed it, and they're like, they're gonna wanna come, so I don't, it's just gonna get bigger, because I feel like it's a snowball effect, and it is a testament to your leadership, City Manager Tom Piccolati, I wanted to say that again, like, it was a testament to your leadership. But you'd think that we would have enough for that day, but you know, I met our amazing mayor at Seafood City later that evening, and it didn't stop there. I was like, I was like carrying Giselle, she was knocked out. But like, I saw Mayor come in, I'm like, I gotta go home now, this one fell asleep. Even with all the dancing, she knocked out, and I'm like, okay, she's lulled by the music. And it was just wonderful, because kind of the same, some folks that came from the festival were there, and so they continued that really joyful energy at Seafood City. It was like lines beyond, and so it was great to see both at Top of the Hill and then Seafood City continue. And I feel like it did bring that destination feel on both ends, in the grocery store and the festival. I also wanted to say the Bachi Tournament was amazing, it was such a great turnout. Thank you to the recreation team, Denise, and everyone that put it together. Also, congratulations, guess who won?
Fire.
The seniors! I'm talking about the overall, overall tournament. So the seniors won, so they got the trophy back from fire, and they got the trophy back from police. But when you have the, what do you call it, the friendly competition between the fire and police, the firefighters did win. So, you're right, fire, they got it that time. But I know the seniors really enjoy it all the time. Also, Woodrow Wilson PTA had their Harvest Festival. It was really wonderful to see the businesses support that. And it's a festival not only for the children in the neighborhood, they open it up to everyone. Also, had the pleasure of joining Councilmember Perano and our beloved Mayor Rod at the Council of Cities Dinner. We missed you, Vice Mayor, I think you would have loved it, next time come. Yes, no, they, this place is gonna have, be open up to everyone, but I think they were doing trial run on their food, but it was pretty amazing, it's a mixed-use development, mostly office, but not, no residential, but as far as like commercial, opening up the commercial portion to everyone, to the public. So it's kind of like a dining hall with a restaurant. And I know that Councilmember Perano got some digits to the developer to try to see if they can come over here. Yeah, and then also, happy one-year anniversary to Capa Cultural Center. You know, I was deep, really deeply honored to receive an award alongside our mayor, Das Magboal, who I remember when Capa Cultural Center was coming. He had told Stephanie, hey, at that time, why don't you reach out to me when I was mayor? And that's when we connected about their vision, and so I wanna acknowledge you for connecting me with Stephanie at that time. And now, you know, they've had their one-year anniversary, and it was packed in there. But if you haven't been there, you should really try out their amazing drinks. I'm like, it's like, I crave it sometimes, it's not good. But they have so many specialty drinks there. And then was able to come to the early part of Dia de los Muertos. You know, really, so beautiful as well, thank God for the weather. I thought it was gonna, you know, be sprinkly, but it did not rain. And once again, you know, the vendors were out there, and really the opportunity for us to honor our loved ones and our ancestors, you know, it was really beautiful. I just wanna share with my colleagues that I look forward to bring, to sponsor in a resolution for the Jose Rizal Geller Park with Mayor Rod as a co-sponsor. I was gonna bring it to this agenda, but I knew that we were having a long one. And so we'll be bringing that forth at the next council meeting as far as solidifying the location in front of Geller Park, right by the library. If you were to look at the location, it looks like something should be there. And so I think it was waiting for, you know, a global statue for our community. Also, at San Mateo Supervisor Board of Supervisors Meeting, I was able to attend, and also be there for, stand up for Domestic Violence Prevention Month, as well as Filipino-American History Month, and was deeply honored to receive the proclamation along with Tita Perla to honor the contributions of Filipino-Americans in San Mateo County. And then also, that evening on Saturday, I was really grateful to be honored along with Romeo Marquez, who is like a public speaker, but for my work as a government, in government and also public service, to receive an award from the Bayan Hangaala. Usually, my husband is with the kids in the evening, but that time, we had to actually have, we were able to have date night, and my parents watched the kids. And I was really grateful that my husband was there to witness that award, but that award really is shared with my family, I can't do the work without them. And I was so grateful he was able to join me that evening. But I will share that my children now know how to use iPad, and they were using the voice, mommy, daddy, when are you guys coming home? We want you, and so we weren't, you know, we didn't stay out that late, had to go back to the kids. But I just wanted to share, really, really grateful for that opportunity. I wanna thank Assembly Member Matt Haney for giving me a recognition during that evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Are there any other City Council Reports? I just wanna just give a big shout out to all the city staff, right? Pachanga, Casaya Hance Daly City, Top of the Hill Festival, Dia de los Muertos. I wanna throw a party, but they're gonna have to be the ones working it. But I just wanna say bottom of my heart, thank you to everybody from bottom to the top, top to the bottom. What an amazing, like, month and a half with all the festivals, what an amazing year with all the different events. I just wanna say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, times a million.
Mr. Mayor, I do wanna say something, if I may. Thank you for being the shining bright light. You know, you as being mayor this year really has been wonderful. I think your energy and positivity is really, you know, it's what leads our city, and you shine brightly, so thank you so much for your leadership.
Appreciate it, thank you, Councilmember Manalo.
And to the mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Give you a little kudos. I think it started in Japan, and it hasn't stopped. But I think when, at one point, I think I saw you at the stage, and we were talking, and we both said, our hearts are full, it's a crazy, like, it's gonna explode. Because it was two things, that, Top of the Hill, oh my gosh, that was amazing. And I just wanted to hear Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, because it was your, you missed it the first year, and I wanted to hear what you thought.
I have to start off by thanking staff, because when I got a notice that I got a parking spot, and I asked my wife, I says, whoa, here's a parking spot, oh, that's gonna be two, three blocks away. And when I got there, it just went right down the hill, so, perfect planning. I mean, the little things that went into this, and I was just so impressed. And you're right, Councilmember Perano, I didn't go last year, but you know what, I'm gonna do my best to make sure I don't miss it again. And it was gonna be bigger, okay, just as long as you get the Temptations and the Four Tops there. I mean, you know.
We hear what genre.
Get two tops. Our budget's gonna be them.
But it was good. I'm just so happy, Daly City is on the map, and the city manager, you always come through. So thank you for everything, and your staff, oh my goodness, all good. Thank you, Councilmember Perano, for getting me to speak up.
All right. So last thing, part of our agenda is for adjournment, and we have one adjournment, and I'm gonna hand it off to, oh, sorry, but I skipped staff?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair.
I don't have 22.
Yeah, no, I just wanna echo a lot of the things that the council, the leadership is contagious. We feel it, we wanna deliver. For that, specifically to the festival, that was almost a year-long process of the staff of Maybel and Leilani and Rihanna, that core. And then getting the rest of the department heads involved as we moved along. I think fire, police, police was indispensable, recreation, public works, water. Everybody just, HR, everyone just wanted to be part and do something to make it a great event. So I think when you get that, everyone pulling the same direction, I think you come up with a great event like that. And then God shines on us and gives us beautiful weather, so. But thank you for your leadership.
And library.
Library was, library was critical, I mean, in the merch booth, yeah. No, I think every department played a part in some way, shape, or form. So to all the departments, I appreciate it, so. But I appreciate the council's leadership in allowing us to carry out such a, such a great event. Thank you.
Well, you know, I think somebody up here said that it went off without incident. Was that you, Councilmember Manalo? Oh, we had an incident there. Oh, yeah, we had an incident. No, the chief was assaulted many times.
Okay, when you say it like that, you know, like, people are gonna be like, what happened? You have to further the sentence.
Leave it to the imagination, huh? That was unfair, because when the fire chief kept dunking you, it was like, he's a, he's a baseball player, because he wouldn't miss the mark, oh, it was like four or five times in a row.
And so I'll piggyback on Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I'd like to thank Ms. Denise. I'd like to thank uh Ms. Denise Brown for, when I walked by, she goes, I have three more balls, do you wanna try? And I go, what did I say? I I I haven't thrown in a long time. And the chief was in the box, well, I mean, it helped that, you know. And I throw it and it hit right there in the middle, I was shocked.
Oh no, that's somebody pushing the button for you, make you look.
No, no, no. It, I didn't throw it enough to knock him in the water, but I hit it right there, didn't I? Tell the truth.
No, no.
It was, it was great fun, so thank you for letting me do that, so.
Thank you, okay. So uh last part of our adjournment is, oh, last part of agenda is adjournment, and I'm gonna hand it off to Councilmember Pranay.
Thank you very much. Um many of you might remember Carol Simmons. And she was our former, well, now she was former library director. Oh, I'm sorry, she was, what's her title? I'm I'm losing my mind, she was, she was you, you were her? Yeah, so she, when she left, she, well, before she left, she was one of the uh founders with Alteglia and Susan President Smith of the Daly City Public Library Associates. And so even though she was retired, she would come back and help with that event to raise money for the libraries. Um and not just that, I think the last time I actually spoke to her, she was helping in San Mateo County for seniors. If a senior had gone to this workshop they were doing, they would give them an iPad. They would teach them how to use the internet and they were giving away iPads. And so this is the kind of person that Carol was. Carol was very kind and she was, she always had a really lovely smile. You know, when you speak to her, she'd be smiling all the time, and many of you probably experienced that. And she, and but most importantly, she was a kind individual who was quite giving and 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 in in the community. And so we lost her, um she passed away. Uh she had a battle with cancer and she um I wanted to make sure, I guess, when I asked to speak, you could read an obituary, you could read all the things she's done, right? But what she did that might not be there is that she shared her sunshine and she shared her kindness and she shared her, you could tell her hope for what can she do, right, for the community. And so that's kind of what I'd like us to remember, i- and take a a leaf out of her book that we try our best to to help the community and we continue to do that and to make a difference in our world and in Daly City. So I'd like to just adjourn a memory of a really wonderful person, Carol Simmons.
Thank you, everyone, getting adjourned. And we'll see you back in November. It's beautiful.